Recall the February 11th, 2025, City of Trinidad, City Council meeting to order. We're reconvening from closed session with nothing to report. And so would you please support the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. So the first on tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda. So I'll ask the, the council, first, any changes to tonight's agenda that you'd like to make? I don't think he changed at all. All right, no, it's any public comments or changes to tonight's agenda? Right, seeing that, and we'll bring it back to the council. And we are ready for a motion. I saw a move. Okay. There are second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Yeah, we approved the agenda, right? We can always change our minds. Approval of tonight's minutes is the next item. This is for January 14th, 2025. Any comments from the council, the editor changes? Any comments from the public on the minutes from January 14th? All right, back to the council. They're moved to approve the minutes from January 14th. So moved. And a second from Katie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the minutes had passed for January 14th, and next is council reports and committee assignments. And I think I started that way, so I'll start with you, Bryce, this time.
I do have a little here, if I can find my notes. Went to my first HCO meeting and it's all that Mike Johnson's going to continue as the chair, Steve Medron will be vice chair. Executive Committee will be Stacy Salazar. They had 14 applicants for the position of executive director. Four or five very strong applicants from this area. That's all I have on the report.
Thank you. Katie, do you have anything?
The Animal Advisory Committee has a meeting set for March 5th at 6 o'clock here in town hall.
Harry, do you have anything you want to share?
Don't. I'm just new getting on the R E D C, and I believe you attended the meeting. I was unable to attend. There's another one happening at the end of this month, so I'll report back on that meeting next time. And then I also signed up for the SRI Management Plan Implementation Committee. I don't have anything to report on that. Still getting on board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I have nothing to report on this.
Hey, thank you. So yeah, briefly, I did attend the R E T economic community meeting on the 27th. That was a seminar on health care, and I think probably at least we had enough press. So I won't go into a lot of detail, but it was a nice kind of overview of what the county is trying to do to attract more health care professionals to this area. And then we had the Laughco meeting on January 15th, and we elected a new chair, see, Magron, or Supervisor Magron will be taking that over. We also did a preliminary review of the Hokebe Municipal Water District Service Area and sphere of influence, but the final review of that will be in March. So that was Laughco. No, skip that one. That was too much to report there. Then, sir, I just wanted to mention that the Community Emergency Response Team has now gathered well over 1,000 pairs of shoes for the shoe drive. And that's going to end this Friday, so thanks again, everyone. And there's going to be a countywide SIR fundraiser, March 1st from 6:30 to 10:30. It's the Marty Roth game, so it should be verified again, March 1st at the Sequoia Conference Center. You can get your free feather mask if you register right away. And the online registration is SWRotary.org. If anybody needs that, I'll post that on the website. So you could support your SIR team by going to the Marty Roth. All right, I think that's it for council reports and committee assignments. Any questions from the council about any of those reports? Okay, any questions from the public? Okay. I don't see any, so we're going to move on to staff reports, and I'll turn it over to our city manager, Joe Tyne.
Thank you, Mayor Kelly, as members of the council, and those of you here and watching from home or wherever you're at. Updates from the last town hall meeting. Staff attended the SRI Management Team Meeting, trying to discuss some of the engineering choices and consulting choices that we have for the project upcoming for the Axel Lingburn Memorial Trail. We were discussing both short-term opening and the longer-term opening of Wardlock Project. It's going to be a more difficult task on short-term opening. There was some discussion on placing a bench on the current trail in an area that has access and can be safely enjoyed. Trail at this point is pretty steep and and even staff that's been on it to help clear it had to have roads to get up and down that part of the path that we cleared for project. The project team to get down on the trail. I will provide additional information as it becomes available on both short-term and long-term ALMT. A water tank and pipelines, a tank filling process started last week. The tank is full. They were doing some some pipeline cleaning today. They had to run some water through the pipelines, some highly contaminated water, and then they took some samples. So that testing should be complete by the end of this week, and then next Tuesday, we're going to have a shutdown. We sent letters out to all residents who are on the water system. I made multiple discussions with the business owners. Tuesday seemed to be the best day, so next Tuesday, there's going to be a shutdown. It's planned to last most of the day. We're hoping that it will be shorter than that. But for all of you who are out there and at home, today the water's going to shut down pretty early, so just be aware. Once it does get fired back up again, you should probably run the water for a couple of minutes. It will be probably a little discolored. That's just part of the process of what happens when you introduce water back into the system. No safety or health concerns. It's a normal part of the process. But just so you know, we probably will see a little discoloration, but no real health concerns with that. West Haven Intertie Project is finally moving along pretty at a nice pace. We spent the past couple of weeks working on a memorandum of understanding. The draft is before council tonight to discuss. Then staff will take that backup and work with the West Haven staff to create and develop an MOU that will help us manage that intertie. We hope to get that project into construction at spring of this year. It's a very, it's a simple project in some ways, but it's complex in the fact that we're having to manage two different agencies, so we're hopeful that we're going to get it under construction and that we will have an intertie by the end of the summer that will help us when we have needs and help West Haven if they have needs in emergency water. Staff is trying to work on our GIS, a mapping system that we have had for some time. We attended a Zoom training on that. We're hoping to learn how to use the mapping tool a little bit better, especially to help map our infrastructure, track our inventory signs and benches and trash cans and the kind of things that we own and manage here in town. And we hope to be able to share those maps with the public as we develop them and collect more infrastructure. So the club's going to have a Valentine's Day event Friday evening. Here at Town Hall, they're going to have quite a few silent auction items, and the raffle have to be present to win, I've been told. So I hope you all participate in that. The Clam Beach Run had 800 registered as of last week. When I went up there on Saturday, it was probably a good turnout. From what I've heard, it was a great run. The river wasn't too high. And we had our SIR team on site, so we want to thank them for helping to participate with traffic control and product control and community. And we look forward to next year's Clam Beach Run. That's all I have, Mayor. Happy to answer questions for anyone that has them. Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention that this last month's Coleman bill invoice was $13,200. I know there are some specific requests for that. So I would also like to say that I am in the process of interviewing a couple of different alternatives to Coleman. So I hope to have news on that in the next update next month. Please follow. I can answer.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Any questions from the public on the city manager's report? Please.
Sorry, just want to watch out. Do you have a box for time in the morning?
A.m. Yeah, I was going to say night, I think a.m.
And then what's the best way for us to know when it comes back on?
Well, that's a good question. Yeah, I would say I would run a faucet check.
Yeah.
I would just leave one open, like leaving the farthest one, like the shower in the master bedroom or something, then you can hear it running. Yeah.
Maybe we can put it on the city's website, emergency banner, I was just thinking.
Yeah, we'll figure out something.
Yeah, so we can kind of say water's off, water should be back on or something.
Give you all a good reason to sign up for that notify we have on the website. So check it, check on the website. We appreciate that.
See, the town hall online, so is there no?
No, Mayor, the town hall is not here to see.
But there is information in the packet if anyone wants to review that. Okay, so with that, then we will be at items on the floor. And at this time, things that are not on tonight's agenda can be discussed. And, you know, give or take three minutes if you have something you want to share with the community.
Sorry, I guess I'm going to be. Wanted to come back around on the bus survey that was sent out. I responded with some things about, you know. I don't know if you heard anything yet, but I was curious if anybody, in fact, I think you're on the I don't know if they're talking about it yet, or my first meeting is tomorrow morning. But what's the question? Oh, well, I'm just concerned. I'm curious that they're going to increase the frequency of buses through town.
They are. So right now it's every three hours. They're hoping to get down at every, like, one area. But that's like a kind of long term.
I think the big thing is, is just considering the impacts of the bus actually coming through town more frequently. How do you feel about that? I know, obviously, I'm a vested person because it comes down Hector. It's really not that bad right now. An hour, honestly, probably isn't that bad either. But there was some talk about 15 minutes and the thing that sounded a little bit like, well, so just just a voice of, hey, let's just take a vent, be, make sure that we're all comfortable. I think there could be alternatives for the bus to turn around without having to come through town, but it may not be worth it. An hour, you know. The other question, and I maybe should have brought this up in minutes, but the security, just how's the security guard situation going? I was just curious to hear if they could give us an update and if we still feel confident that this is a good city funds. I'm not saying it's not. I don't have anything, not trying to put a but I feel like it's been enough time to maybe bring it back up.
Yeah, that's a good point. We talked about this a little bit last time, and maybe having Gene come in and give us kind of an update on sort of what PAC Security has been doing, the anecdotal stuff, you know, was a lot of community support for it. But maybe we need to ask for more, like some J or a little more. Okay.
And I'm not taking additional where the others.
Yeah, it's good to chat. Yeah, thank you. Other items from the floor? Hear you.
The trade that David breakfast is facing for closure. I think it was the mortgage the entire time, which Alfred, not this chapter, like. Much chance that property goes up to auction for one official sale. At time. Last week, August, last year. Probably last year, it was six and a unpaid mortgage, and it was too great to reorganize. Hey, I talked to a loaner at Lincoln. It's too far north. The day of breakfast, I do notice.
Okay, take your time.
Share with it. I have to be like, it's an asshole at times. Great, Chris. It's just over. You went back to tell everybody. It's over. Thanks so much, your mercy. Is that me? With the lighthouse occupation from COVID, we'll be sued. I carried Mike for the last 10 months since I bathed him. My life in trip. It's something I didn't know. This is over. Refund the guesses we're going to have to save. It's not over until it's going to be. I'm going to place this land. Place like God. Have years of friend. Doesn't very well be here. People wise. Just, I'm going to be living in my SUV parking lot. That's what it's going to be. That's in my community, too. Tyler, one, I, I just don't want.
Not at all. And Tyler, the, you know, the courage that it takes to stand up and and talk about it. Yeah.
Yeah, it's over.
Yeah, so this this community is tight knit, and I think yeah, we should talk offline a little bit, maybe either during this meeting or after, with maybe Joe and I and you a little bit about what this city.
Except that there's a lawyer that's suing Mike from right now.
Like, I know that's been a point of contention. Yeah. But I think, I think we are aware, at least Joe and I are aware of this situation. I know the rest of the community isn't, and I was probably very shocked and surprised by this news, so. Yeah. And I think we can talk about ways, maybe as a community, you know, how can we help?
$1.4 billion.
Yeah.
That's what we'll say.
That might be hard. The city has a, you know, we certainly, you know. Unfortunately, the city is, it's
I tried to read.
I don't have a key.
I tried everything. Can't, cannot, chapter 13. The promise they have to find you is just too great. Plus, it's just, it's
If anyone has some ideas for Tyler, you know where to find him, and yeah, he'll be here for a little bit. You got things to there. Okay, so you know where to find. Yeah.
They're going to have to remove me, my, and I wouldn't ready to leave.
Okay.
It's happening. Y'all understand that trade that David breakfast. It's over. For those of the people that wanted to fail, you can't yourself. Because you know who you are.
Take your time. Thank you. Yes, any other items from the floor, comments? In the discussion about the crosswalk down. Yeah, so we're going to talk about that tonight, too.
Okay. I think that those signs are great. I think they would be better on the corner of West and Trinity Street. Because I walked, I walked the entire town every day. And the only time I've been afraid going and being scared is going across that particular car crosswalk, because people can't see you because people park on both sides of the road, and they don't see you.
And I always hate to do this, but I have to I have to put the comments about the specific agenda item with that agenda item.
Okay.
There's going to be a lot of discussion about this topic.
So we're going to get into yeah, get into a larger discussion about it, and we're going to remember your public comment that you just made, and you can add to it as well when we get to it. And this is still, any items from the floor that don't relate to tonight's agenda. But we will be moving right along. We're going to be, we're going to get there very soon here. Okay, so the next thing, I think that's it for items from the floor. Thank you, everyone, for your understanding and kindness. Next up is the consent, tonight's consent agenda. Oh, pardon me. Richard Johnson. Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you. Sorry, I was just trying to wave to get your attention. Two things real fast. Can you hear me, by the way?
Yes.
Yeah, the sound tonight is very, very bad, very below. It's unfortunately, I couldn't hear any of the public speakers at all. As I said, two, two items very quickly. The first item is that the the street light at the library in Saunders Park is not operating. And that's a real safety issue. That's a very, very dark area. And I would hope that we can figure out who's responsible for making that work again. I don't know if it's PG&E or the city, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. The second item is a little bit longer, but I'll be brief. I think based on where we are in our current situation, I think it would might be useful to have a public discussion on annexation. I'm not necessarily advocating one way or the other, but I think it would be very useful to have a discussion on what the pros and cons are, the process. The mayor indicated tonight that there was some information about her attending Laughco meetings, and they're an organization that's very much involved in that. But I just feel like it might be useful to have that information or bring it to the public so that we can all understand what can and cannot be done and what the ramifications are of it, and whether or not it makes sense for specific areas of the, of the greater Trinidad area. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Richard. Did you want to respond?
I can, Mayor. I just want you to know that we conducted a streetlight survey two weeks ago. We were aware of that light at the library. I touched on the PG&E rep this week. So there were four or five lights that were on that list, and I expect to be, have her check back in with me this week or early next week to tell me when to set those lights to be repaired, so.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
On annexation, we are, I and they, what they're going to do is probably in the next six months or so, an educational presentation that will be open to the public. That would be more about, you know, what is annexation? What are the pros and cons? What's involved, that kind of thing? So there's no, no plans to annex anything at the moment, but we want to educate us all, especially the council on what's involved. So thanks, Richard. I think we'll get that scheduled the next, I don't know, three to six months or so. Would they be coming here? Yeah, they would come here and present in a potentially a special meeting, but it could be a regular meeting, depending on how long it takes.
Okay, April, I would guess, and you'd probably be in a regular meeting there.
All right, other public comments not related to tonight's agenda?
Guys, somebody came to me on Sunday and said that there are some sinkholes the bluff trail that are fairly large, about five feet and 10 feet deep. Dog found them. We kind of went off trail. I guess there's that, you know, going up towards Underwood, go past, you can kind of go into the brush there. There's a little bit of a trail that's evident. If you walk down there, there's basically some holes. And the question that sort of raises for me is, we've had slides on Van Wijk, we've had drops out in the bluff. I've also heard talk from people on the planning commission and in town that there's been conversation about as this is progressing, that there might be a need to turn Edwards, Hector, Trinity, and that street from the Erie into a one-way loop. I just feel like if we are facing erosion, that this conversation we've had very publicly and the community is involved, because obviously there are people on that side. And if the hillside is rotating, I think it's a good thing to start talking about as soon as possible.
Can I just ask a bit more information on where that's at?
So you know, there's a trail that comes down from Underwood down towards the bluff?
I know.
Yeah.
If you make a right and you're kind of heading towards the split in the trail, there is a way for you to kind of, or maybe it's right actually there, there's kind of like a little landing, and you can kind of go down in bluff in the brush, and I think people go down there, too. So this is just
All right, we'll check it out. Thank you for the heads up.
Um, okay, other items from the floor? Thank you. I find it keeps you.
Just to put it in order, my name is Janine Volkbar. I live at 393 North St. Paul. And I've noticed over the years that generally when people come up to this podium, they do say their name, their address. And I think it's helpful because God of the building knows everybody. So if we can all try to do that, I think even if you think everybody knew, then why we suddenly need to listen to them? Thank you.
Thanks, Janine, and I'll remember to remind as well. It's, and it is optional for people to do that under, yeah. Okay, so other items from the floor? All right, then we will move on to the consent, tonight's consent agenda councilors. I will ask you first if there's anything from the consent agenda that you want to call or just Okay. Members of the public, any comments about tonight's consent agenda?
Hi, this is Davis. Hi, Fabian Hector. I'm looking at item number four. Looks like there's another street project plan happening, and I just had a couple of questions about it. One was, a person's GHD is in line to be selected again for this project? And I'm curious how that selection process happened? What's the process for determining who that person, that who were people are?
Can you go ahead with your second question as well? We may need to pull this to have that level of discussion, so I need to hear what your thoughts.
Well, I just was wondering if it was a better bid primarily. I also think that in light of the current conversation that's coming up next, I hope I dive into those comments. But in light of that, I do believe But in light of that, I, I do believe that GHD should, any contract with GHD should be paused. I think this, the council should highly consider that. Only because it appears that there is a very, uh, different, uh, strong difference of opinion amongst many people in town about the, um, level of safety needed and what that actually means to the town. And I don't know that GHD is the best representative to do that. So, uh, that's just my, my take on it. So if, if you have answers, that's great. If not, um.
Uh, yeah, I, it's more of a point of order thing. Thank you. Uh, the question is, um, do I need to pull this item to answer questions? I think that one, the first question about the bid process, probably not. So if we have an answer, we can answer Andrew now, and if not, we can get back to you later.
I can answer that, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, this was done before my time, um, but in general, GHD is our city engineer. The act is our city engineer since, uh, we don't have a public works department. And as a part of that, they are, are engineering, uh, division that performs this type of work. So work that would normally be performed by a city, uh, engineering department is performed by GHD as.
Should we have an ongoing contract?
We have, yeah.
Yeah, so, and if we want to get into that, which we can, at some point, we need to agendize it or pull it, uh, to go deeper on it. But hopefully that answers your question for now and.
It answers the first question, but, uh, I, I don't, I don't, I guess, uh, like some form of response on the second part, whatever that response is.
Yeah, well, the second part was, okay.
Second part.
Uh, is that it, it, it appears that there is a strong disagreement with the community and GHD's stance on certain road design, uh, situations and approving another contract with them or another, uh, a, a teneture with them at this time doesn't seem proving considering that it would seem to be at odds in terms of their design things and what, what, what you think.
Uh, I, I would say that just in terms of, of design, engineering design and engineering principles and engineering practices, GHD is following the professional practices that they're credentialed by the state of California and perform. So it is not likely you would get a different result with a different.
I, I actually disagree with you on that.
Okay.
Which, which is fine, but I just, just to point out why, I, I actually have a reason for that. Um, in, and I, I, Mayor, stop me if I'm getting, if I'm believing too much on the other item.
Check out with this.
But, um, you know, in, in researching the things on Edwards, it is very much, it, we are, you know, very much an engineering judgment area. The guidance on that sort of street is very much an engineering judgment area, which means that if you talk to another engineer, reasonable people who disagree. And what I'm seeing, again, in my opinion, is that we're seeing someone who is putting things in their professional judgment is just a little bit too, I'm not saying anything against it, but their professional judgment is a little too cautious for what I think the town would like to see.
Sure, and we can disagree, but in my 20 years in public works, I would say that they are what you would expect to design for a roadway, uh, in any kind of a design for a roadway. That, that's what you would get as typical design. Uh, there are rules and, and practices that they follow that are special and required by them. And, and because they take tests and get credentialed by the state, they have their engineering judgment is allowed to be used, uh, as a part of their decision-making process. So not likely that we would get a different decision. Um, I think we probably could do a different path to helping make better decisions going forward with the community involvement. Uh, I don't think you would get a different outcome with a different engineering, um, based on same set of conditions that we have on Edwards.
We're gonna, we're gonna, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 yes.
I don't agree with the thing what Joe just said.
Point of origin, right, because this is, yes, you're so. People online can't hear, but this is why I was concerned because we're, we're getting into.
I'm trying to keep it separate. I'm trying to address specifically this.
I'm not, I'm not, uh, saying that you did that. I'm saying that this is how conversations evolve. And so, so thank you for bearing with me as I try to kind of manage the meeting. And, um, and we are gonna talk about that more in that topic, Andrew. So, so we now know how we select it and then now we're gonna, when we get to that agenda, we'll get in deeper. But we also need to see where we end up with that agenda item as well and, right, and.
Well, I think that, that's why I was suggesting that you put a pause on this particular subject because
I see.
We, we are in the middle of a very contentious discussion that involves
Okay.
this group and we're about to approve getting back into that. So I, I, I would just think that that would be inhumane to put a pause on that and
Okay.
wait for the further discussions.
I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you for that. And then I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Are there any counselors then who want to pull that item at approval, uh, for the GHD task force step funded, um, road rehab project? Pulling discussion. Are there any counselors that want to do that?
No, I don't. Uh, I'd like to say why I don't.
Okay.
Uh, because listening, uh, to Andrew, it seems to me there's a, um, a cultural or aesthetic uh, sensibility difference with GHD perhaps, but not, I see no reason to say that there's anything technical. Uh, so it's another company that do better.
We're still.
I'm just gonna wait.
So for that.
And it may not go back and forth yet until we, yeah.
For that reason, I, I would vote no, not, oh, I don't.
Okay. If, okay, so no counselors at this point want to pull this. Um. I had a question about it. Uh, my question was when this work was gonna be done because I feel like, um, so, so I, I guess. I do, I'm debating about pulling it because I do want to have the bulk of that discussion further on where we can really get into the details. Um. Are we gonna be looking at this one more time or is this the final approval? Uh, Joe and Gabe, if, if we were to, if the council goes ahead to consent to this.
I think this is, this, this gets them into the plan specs and engineering portion of the project, so there will be additional time, but this, they will be, be developing plan specs and engineering for this project.
Okay.
That's what you, that's what this task for.
And I don't, I, I'm not, um, keen to pull it either then because I think we're gonna have another look at it. And I also, um, my only question about was when this work would be done because we've done so much construction lately in the summertime. And, and I guess my more general comment is that the feedback I get from the public is from the community is it's just been a lot in the summertime.
That's construction season there.
Yeah, I know, I know exactly, exactly.
Favors and faves, yes, conditions that are kind of.
We've just been doing a lot of big projects. Um, so anyway, that was, that was one thing. So, um, I don't, uh, see the council pulling this, Andrew, so we're gonna wait for the discussion further on and you'll be.
I just had two comments on what just happened. If, if I don't, that's okay. Uh, first, uh, just to be clear, because that's some real money going out the door that you're now approving. That, I just, you know, you're, you're, you're stepping into the process before we really decide if, you know, if the community has an opportunity to weigh in based on the way the further conversation, I, 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 I feel like that's inappropriate. That's what you guys want to do. Second, Katie, I, I actually strongly disagree with what you said. It's not, it's not, there is an aspect of what you're saying that's correct, but the, what I'm up here to say is, is that digging into the technical guidance on this subject, there are differences that, that could be done on a technical level. You could get a different. And I feel like what we're seeing is a very technical, uh, presentation given to us. And, um, that doesn't mean that another engineer might not disagree with you on a technical level. So I want to be very clear that what you said is not what I was presenting.
Thank you.
All right. I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second? I said, second, and all those in favor? Aye. Aye. The consent agenda for tonight is approved and we're gonna go on to item number one on our regularly scheduled agenda, which is proclamation 2025 dash O1, acknowledging the public service of our former mayor, uh, of the city, excuse me, former mayor. Former city manager. Former city manager. Eli Naffa. So Eli, if you wouldn't mind standing at the podium, we would like to recognize your service to the city of Trinidad uh, with a proclamation of appreciation. Whereas this Trinidad city manager acts as the chief executive officer of the city and is selected by the city council. Whereas Eli Naffa recently celebrated his 35th anniversary working in city government, beginning his career as an intern for the city of La Mirada, California, and has also been an associate professor, uh, at, uh, College of the Redwoods for the past 15 years. Whereas Eli Naffa was selected by the council as city manager in March of 2019 and served at the, the city of Trinidad through the end of 2024. And whereas Eli, over the past five and a half years, helped the city navigate its way through the pandemic and oversaw stormwater and water provisioning projects, trail-related projects, coastal plans, program updates, grant acquisition, animal control and law enforcement agreements, installation of a new city website, roadwork, repaving projects, ordinance revisions and climate action planning, along with myriad other duties. Whereas in his retirement, Eli will continue to teach at the College of the Redwoods, providing consulting services to municipalities and to hopefully travel the world. Uh, now therefore let it be resolved that the city of Trinidad congratulates and thanks Eli for his dedicated service to the citizens of Trinidad and to the future well-being of the community. And this is, uh, passed unanimously by the council. All those in favor, I believe. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Eli, for all the hard work over the last five.
About the, uh, party.
Yeah, tomorrow from noon to two, we're doing a little potluck here for Eli or join us.
Raise a toast and hello, Sunday, Eli and the rest of us.
Yeah.
It'd be fun.
Hear the stories.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I, I've worked in eight cities and this is the first one that's giving me a proclamation, so it's very much appreciated. Uh, and, and it's my favorite city of all because, uh, it is such a beautiful picturesque city that gets so many tourists because it is special. So, uh, it'll always remain special for me and, and thank you for that honor.
Thank you. Okay, the next, uh, item on tonight's agenda is the continued discussion decision regarding the cycle 10 beach set project. And this is the re- reviewing the pedestrian safety improvements on, on Edwards. And Josh Wolf is here, it's here to get us started. I believe, or did, did staff want to beat into this?
Yeah, thank you, Saul. Good evening, Mayor.
Hello.
See everyone again. He's gonna queue up a brief presentation for us. And I will try to keep it brief in the, of a lot of public comment and we'll be swiping the questions as well. All right, so again, I'm Josh Wolf, I'm the city's complex city engineer, also engineer GHD, here to talk about the Edward Street crosswalk improvements, uh, real that are related as part of the city's cycle 10 beach set project. But I saw. So I want to do just a very brief project history. Uh, we did, uh, try to convey a lot of information to staff before on a lot of various projects, the decisions that have been made over the years that have really led to this current project. Uh, stepping back big, great, big picture, want to convey that the city's really actively working for over a decade, uh, on pedestrian and connectivity improvements on Edward Street. Uh, and the street again is really the only pedestrian connection from Upper Trinidad or downtown Trinidad to the lower harbor beach area. A lot of this started, uh, back in 2010 with the failure of the Van Wijk Trail. Uh, during the studies, and the efforts the city's made at that time to identify potential, some potential improvements of the Van Wijk Trail and connectivity, uh, became very evident that the city really lacked a safe, a safe and accessible route between Upper Trinidad and Beach Harbor. So there was a series of projects over the years, but ultimately it's led us to this beach set cycle 10 project, which was awarded 21, where the city awarded around $800,000 for various safety improvements in town. Uh, component of that, obviously with some improvements on Edward Street, moving on slightly. So, uh, there was actually three separate components to the beach set project. There was a set aside for car rail upgrades, striding upgrades and then the pedestrian crossing enhancements. Uh, there was three different locations that were identified for pedestrian cross enhancements. There was Main Street in view, Edward Street in Galendo and Edward Street at Hector. Equipment is generally with new advanced crosswalk markings, curb ramps, foldouts, signage and striding enhancements and rectangular rapid flashing beacons or RRFs. I'm really focused on that last location here, the Edward Street and Hector Street, because that seems to be the most contentious at this point, it looks like. So just a brief overview of RRFs, I didn't talk about this at last meeting, and I think those people are familiar with them at this point, but they are pedestrian activated safety device used to crosswalks enhance visibility and increase driver awareness. Uh, they're effective crosswalks where there's, excuse me, crosswalks that uncontrolled legs and intersections, so where there's no stop signs and traffic will normally stop. Uh, they've been proven to increase driving rates, uh, times 90%.
Okay, just.
Uh, 90% and they can reduce collisions involving pedestrian crosswalks by 47%. Essentially, they're proven, both cost treatments improve pedestrian crossing safety. So, uh, the graphic here, again, this is what I think we showed at the last meeting. I showed the area, the Trinidad area, there are dark main lines or solid lines, including existing sidewalks and crosswalks in town. The dashed blue line, lines, those are shared facilities, so typically it's a wide shoulder areas where pedestrians utilize the area, but it's not necessarily a dedicated facility. Um, and yellow there is the Edwards and Hector crosswalk, what this really showing is that this is a really critical, uh, component of the city's non-怒躁ized pedestrian network in town. It's actually the only connection between Upper Trinidad and downtown Trinidad and the lower harbor area. You know, Edward Street is one of the busiest roads in town. There's certainly a mix of traffic, local traffic, commercial, visitors and tourist traffic as well. This, like Edwards is also uncontrolled, meaning there's some stop sign on Hector Street, so vehicles do not stop there. Also, it's limited lighting. There is a street light in the vicinity, it's around 90 feet just to the west, closer to the Van Wijk intersection. Uh, but it is a fairly dark intersection. And there was a couple of other considerations that we can play. Uh, first one, this is here, the presence of vulnerable users. This really came about during the, where we Van Wijk studies and we're doing outreach as far as the grant applications. Uh, there's some communication stakeholders, including Trinidad Elementary School. And at the time, their superintendent principal made very clear that this is pretty important to them. Uh, that they often use. At the time, Van Wijk Trail and the crossings in order to get down to harbor also to the marina. And so hence the crossing here, Hector, and Edwards is, Edwards is what got it, like, uh, identified during. Now, the last item here is, uh, there are obviously beautiful coastal views in the area. Uh, there's limited parking. It's of, it's often very congested area, especially during, uh, the summer tourist season. We've got a lot of people there looking for places to park or anywhere they're gonna go, uh, distracted by the views. So all this really contributes to So obviously, there's been a lot of, uh, public feedback received since the crossings were installed back in December. Uh, certainly some has been in support and some has been against. I'm just, to summarize, a few of the, of the common themes that I saw. Those others, comments and support, there's an appreciation for the science systems and their safety enhancements, especially for the more vulnerable users such as children and those with disabilities. A comment I noticed that they had observed that there's a notable increase in regular building times to themselves, pedestrians at crosswalks or historically have to wait a while. There, you know, a broad gap in traffic before they felt safe to cross. Now they're ready to push the button and cars react very quickly and crosswalks a little bit. Us. One comment also noted that the, the signs also show visitors to the area where they're safe to cross. Uh, so it becomes sort of a, a guide sign, call it, where they can see the guide sign. As they should walk down the intersection across Edwards, for example. As they should walk down the intersection across Edward, for example. Edward said crossing up the path was slow, so now people are always aware of for pedestrians. And there was a number of comments against as well, again, trying to summarize as best I could. The first one, the science system is overdesigned, not necessary, but there's been no history of accidents on Edward Street, so essentially they're unworking. Secondly, contrary to the Trinidad fishing, there was issue or why, and that gives struck or degrade the coastal views. It's also not informed in the city's own site rooms or the general plan, and the public was not aware of the planned signs. I don't plan to respond to any of that, to answer questions, so you're welcome. So based on the feedback that we received, you can just have some time going back to see if there's some potential options to make modifications to the systems that have told. Again, focusing on Edward Street and Hector Street. It's with the underlying goal of maintaining the original intent of the safety improvements. So there's been three, three protocols identified, and I'll walk through each one in a little bit more detail. But the first one is replace the side panels with smaller size panels. The second one is to lower the sign on the left side or ocean side. And then to relocate the sign on Hector Street corner for the back from the roadway, try to tuck it in a little bit. The third option is replace the solar panels, so it's like you can control the control cabinets with a or slimmer profile system, I'll show you that as well. So optional one is replace the signs with smaller sign panels. So the existing signs are thirty by thirty. This is the size of these signs that you'd see probably a percent of all crossings. If you ever see something bigger is on a highway. So often you're going to see some smaller signs. ATCD, or which is the design guidance, this traffic control device in California recommends thirty by thirty, but it does provide stability to go down, so it's twenty, twenty-four by twenty-four, who's an engineer judgment. Situation, you feel about as warranted and we could reduce it to twenty-four by twenty-four, we thought we should be able to.
Is that what we're seeing, twenty-four by twenty-four?
I, yeah, so these graphics, I did do my best to try to give you a graphical depiction of what they look like, so these are ever so slightly reducing the image. It's out there now, thirty by thirty, it's just below this. So with the smart panel, we could lower the solar panel system on top by around eight inches. With this, we recommend extending the curb paint up to twenty feet from the crossing. That's actually a random law in California, effective as a So it's something we should really say, well, crossings in the city.
I'm sorry, that's not the law.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's not the law. The law is, we are exempted to town from that. I'm sorry, I just can't stand up there and say stuff that you wrong.
I promise you, you're going to have a chance. And just take a note and we will get to it, and if you disagree, I'm going to hear you.
It's not a disagreement, it's a factually incorrect, what he said.
The council needs to, we need to finish hearing, listening to Josh, and then the council needs to have a discussion, and we have read all of the public comments. I've read it multiple times, and so we are gonna, we really want to hear what you have to say, we really but I need to we need to follow the decorum, please. Josh, please continue.
So the estimated cost for this included about five thousand dollars. All the estimated costs you've seen here, I think, are conservatively high, and we want to give you something. They are also different than what was included in the staff report, because we have had some recent conversations with the contractor, trying to understand what the cost may be. The original cost on the staff report, my best guess, after ongoing conversations, they think it might really present an entire costing to them.
I do have some questions about the cost, but I want to let you finish and then let the council kind of all ask questions before I kind of get to the crux of some of them.
Second option here is to lower and relocate signs. So with this one on the left side, we'll actually lower the sign to two feet. On the Hector side, we shift the actual sign system behind the sidewalks, I heard with the curbed ramp. So we actually push it behind the sidewalk further away from the road, try to tuck it in. Now we've got the power, new pedestrian push button assembly, which is a separate short post, which is located, relocated where the sign is now. It would be interconnecting wiring between the two systems, having installed as part of that. And we'd also recommend extending red curving to thirty feet, this case, and that's because we're pushing signs further away from the road. They can have less visible, it's hard to The estimate for this is around three thousand dollars to lower the sign system on the left side, and around fifteen thousand dollars to move the sign on the Hector side, and add a pedestrian push button assembly. Third option is replace the solar panel system in the control cabinet. So with this one, we replace the actual top of the full mounted system. Currently, it's a separate solar panel, a separate control panel. So this we combine with an integrated, or replace with an integrated sign and panel system, so much slimmer profile system. With that, it's simply lowered the actual top of the solar panels by about a foot, twelve inches. The cost for this is ten thousand dollars, I mean, for the signs in the intersection.
Do I understand you correctly, you're taking off that square panel on the top and locating it elsewhere?
Yes, so right, can you go to the previous slide? Look at the top, you're on the right side, above the yellow side, you see there's a square box, and there's a solar panel above it.
Yeah.
There are two separate systems, so then go to the next slide. And the picture is a single system, so it's much like the one that's out in front of town hall here, it doesn't have a separate control panel, but it's got a thicker solar panel system, because they packed everything in the box. So any combination of these could be included, so we did all three of the suggestions together. Possibly around thirty-three thousand dollars, I would say, looking on the right side or the left side. I'll be estimated to be around forty-four inch reduction in the total height of the signs, so maybe four feet. On Hector side, it'd be an inch reduction, plus the signs would be tucked in against the hill.
I think you just answered my question, which was how much was it, it was an additive for option one, two, and three, and the answer is yes. And then, and then you didn't look at any options that change the size. This is just for the signs on Hector.
Yeah, this is
Not just the ones up above, not the ones down by.
Yeah, the costs here are once or, and we could do intersection, certain some of these treatments, we could talk about them for for other intersections, we want to look at and see what makes sense there. Again, I thought this was the primary focus, so this is the cost. So I wanted to just, you know, at least try to give you a graphical depiction of what this could look like, so I did my best to just draw it on here. Give you an idea of the difference, and it's hard to see in this image. On the right side, we can see the system would be, you know, more or less in the same location, but they're around forty. Just come down. And then that side, the sign is tucked further back on behind the sidewalk.
And the little like thing on the top is still the solar panel that could conceivably come off as well.
No, you still have the solar panel, but a single system, you wouldn't have a control panel, so you wouldn't have the cube, the box. It's just a thicker control panel.
Can you remove the solar panel and control blocks altogether?
No, if you're going to maintain your let's go to a electrified system, so it's more costly, because you're looking at the power draw and you're putting wiring to those sides.
Please, that's a question, there was some discussion last time about the idea of putting lights in the crosswalk. Did you investigate that?
I apologize if I did not investigate that any further, but again, it could be an option, it was something we could look at. It would still need power, though. So it's not
And it would still need signs.
You'd still need signs, yes. You would not do a tree like that without the signs, absolutely. It's enhanced to the sign system, you don't need without the signs.
I didn't know that one. I suggested that I thought the signs can come out. I didn't know that by state law, you would still have to have the signs.
How much would it be to remove all four signs and then relocate them to, you know, prove site that the community could have provision later?
My best guess is it would be less than ten thousand, I don't know the exact number, five thousand dollars.
To remove them.
Yeah, to relocate them, I think is what you're asking. To find another intersection in town.
Right.
Good question. I mean, well, no, I was just, you know, I had kind of looked through the options and, you know, Jack is right, that one option is removing all of the signs. Another one is, another option is removing one set. Another option is keep exactly as is. Another option is we resize. resize them and keep them. I had a couple, I mean, I'll just say what I was thinking. And then I'd love to hear what the other counselors think, and then we'll get some public comment. We have, as I mentioned, read a lot of public comments, so we will get to that, but I think we're kind of, you know, have a pretty good idea of what the sentiment is on both sides of this issue.
Yeah, and this last slide just provides you a summary of the three options I talked about, but I also wanted this couple of options we talked about last time, which were putting the sign system all together. Or just removing the RRFP system off of the sign. Again, I don't recommend, usually not recommend it because they do not maintain the original intended safety improvements of the project for the crosswalk, so.
And just to be clear, we can't just remove I mean, I think we wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we can't just remove the signs and leave the crosswalks, like, you know, we can't just take out signs and leave the markings on the crosswalk.
Why not?
By state law, correct?
No, that's not, that's not actually correct. You could, you could.
I'm just asking the question, you guys.
The signs and crosshairs are not required. Nor is the crosswalk marking. These are all safety improvements to make the crossing safer.
Okay.
You could leave the, you could leave the markings.
You could take it, you could take it all out or leave it. I would not advise you doing it.
Okay, yeah, I just, I think we're just looking at what are the, all of the options, and you know, as everyone read in the packet, there is the indemnification issue, so the city, you know, we need to look at design indemnity. Having an engineer recommend a design, and then our adopting that then has given us some legal indemnification.
Immunity is the word, not indemnification.
I asked last time, and I'm going to ask again, there's no way we can just put a stop sign. There, there, there is a sign, a stop sign coming from Hector onto Edwards. We couldn't put a, like a four-way stop or three-way.
It's possible, but there are laws in California to regulate new stop signs being installed. And so you have to go through a warrant analysis to determine if it's actually warranted, and I don't believe, in my opinion.
You don't think it would fly, but, but it is a possibility.
It's, yeah, it's possible, but I don't think it would pass the warrants, yeah.
And then there would be stop signs there, so then people might like, you know, feel that that was a disruption of the view shed. But they're so much smaller and lower there. Although with the lowering of the, I mean, that is actually a good question, if the lowering is possible, how does that relate to like a stop sign height? Is it, any idea?
Yeah, signs are typically, if you're in an area where pedestrians walk, they need to be seven foot clear. On the plus side, I'd rate it to recommend or suggest you can lower that sign because it's not in a pedestrian area, it's behind the curb. Depends, it depends on the location. Five, five foot is usually minimal, that's five percent.
I guess I also have a question, like at the crosswalk in front of this school, I have a picture of just some signs that are on the center of the roadway to encourage people to slow down, would that be an option to put those in?
Yes, I saw a couple of comments on that one, actually, and I it's in on my head, the challenge with it, here, there's bullbouts on each side. Our concern is if you put it out there, especially since we have now a pedestrian shoulder on one side, the cars are going to start to kind of leave around it, avoid it, because it's already someone in our lane.
Yeah.
So not pushing into an area that's not necessarily protected like out here. I'll take down the question, but I always go to what, what are the tangential outfalls with the system like that? And I think someone referenced that, like, Hopland, that Hopland has him on one of one, and one of the comments, I did go over to look at street view. That's a totally different situation, they have a two-way left turn on the middle of the road. And so those signs are actually offset into the center of the unit, but they don't take it. It's a narrow, so it could be an improvement, but it could also, you know, issue of unintended consequences.
What thoughts? I mean, I mean, I want to hear a public comment. I have read all the comments. I feel like I'm a little bit frustrated because we spent a lot of time and energy on this, and we thought it was the right thing to do for public safety. And and you know, five years ago or so, when I was on the planning commission, I suggested we come up with a master plan for signage for the city because there is such a sentiment of being very careful about, you know, view shed and those types of things, and you know, we hadn't, haven't been able to do that, but there are so many signs that are like individual signs that could be combined and and you know, you could reduce the footprint and so forth. And as I look at these signs on Edwards, I mean, I'll be honest with you, you know, we, we see, you know, pictures in here and so forth, but when we go out and see it in real life, it's, you know, it doesn't, it didn't to me personally fit with, you know, kind of how I view that area and so forth. And so getting them into a smaller footprint. I mean, I'm looking for one when here, because when I hear from the principal of the elementary school, for example, that she, you know, the kids walk down there and they, they really appreciate having her crosswalk, so I mean, the thoughts that have occurred to me, and I'd be interested in getting your feedback and the public's feedback is you know, recite, one option is resize them and keep them for six to nine months through the busy season and see how we feel. See if we think it's made a big difference. If it's still driving us crazy, then, you know, we revisit it. So one option was kind of resize them, keep them temporarily, just knowing we're going to revisit this. Another was, in my mind, was potentially, we only need one set and removing I, in my mind, I could see removing the one up above, the one on Hector, but I like the idea personally of keeping the one on on Galendo, because I think that's where the kids come down, they go to the Marine Lab and they cross the street down there, and it's also, I think it's a good compromise to have one set, we could resize those. So anyway, that's, I'm just giving my opinion as a, as a couple of ideas that might, we might float. And with that, unless there are other questions from the council for Josh, I'm going to go ahead and open to public comment, or if anybody else has a proposal, they want to kind of float with the public.
I have a couple of questions for Josh.
Please.
So I ended up putting quite a bit of time, you know, looking into the background, researching this myself, Josh. One of the things I found using the internet, we could pass that over to I've got a copy for the other members of the council, if you want to pass those down. Look at that. And that's just something I found on a federal website. This department of transportation talks about the big and beacons, the flashing beacons. As you can see there, they, they suggest that one of the considerations that cities should think about before they put those up is that reserve the use of RRFPs for locations with significant pedestrian safety issues as overuse of RRFP treatments may diminish their effectiveness. I guess they're saying, you know, if you put up too many of them, people won't pay as much attention to them. So I'm wondering, are you familiar with that, with the federal viewpoint on that?
I am, I think my staff report actually references it, talking to, so there's a link to it in the staff report.
Okay. And I guess my other question. I mean, I get that, having mixed the sidewalk safer. Like, I guess, you know, what, what was it about? But I guess, you know, what what was it about, um. You know, having in just the sidewalk. Would, it it, it doesn't create a dangerous condition, it, I mean, even before. We didn't even have crosswalks there. Do you think it created an actually dangerous road condition?
Asking if I think the the intersection prior to the improvements was dangerous?
Yeah.
Uh, stop question, answer, I'll tell you, it's, it was not as safe as it is today, um, just because something may be. You know, dangerous, or certainly, we still have properties making safer, much like saying just because it wasn't. Italian that intersection doesn't necessarily mean that it's safe, we still want to do what we can for future developments.
So, um. I guess that's the only, well, would your, would your firm be interested in all in, um. Giving a different opinion, do you think you could, you could give an engineering, uh, engineering opinion that we didn't need the flashing. Signs to go with the crosswalks? And I I would be, you'd be looking at things like the lack of trial accident here. History, the good site. Distance, uh, you know, coming up and so forth.
I I did confer with a colleague on, on several, actually. Yes, there have been, uh, and you find the situation that, you know, it's a long time project. Uh, there was recommendations made, suggestions, uh, council. Funding was awarded, we made a case for funding. Uh, it was, the project was approved, I've been at this council multiple times, only why we suggested the improvements and justifying the improvements. For us to walk that back now. Anyone else footfalls in and then the bank, the situations. Put me a fuel day for another engineer. A lawsuit, and pulled us a lot of, you know, based on the history. It'd be entirely different situation in my opinion, if it was never approved and never moved forward, that's not a rule. That's not, and that's my personal opinion, and I'm not an attorney giving you legal advice, I've heard that comment as well. By.
Right, so since, since you. Already put the opinion that we should have those, you you can't look at that and then strive to.
You know, I think the city can make make the decision, but I I personally don't want to take liability for stacking up on something that we've spent so long recommending design. Sorry, man, construction.
So that we would be accepting the rest, basically.
Yeah, so, so just, just.
Can you hear that, Wes?
So in reference to the cost for um changing size and so forth, and the price right now. Would that money come out of the current grant?
We're answered, I also want to touch on the last one, which was quick as well. So I I am also bound by the professional engineers act, and I think that's a job that's a big deal, I also have a duty of ethics to the safety of the public, and that part of it's. And I think it would be helpful for me to to pull back on the recommendation based on some of the feedback.
And that's.
Something, I missed your question, so sorry.
Yeah, I'm just, um, I'm wondering if, um, the cost you. Estimated for like moving the signs, change, making them smaller, changing them around, would that, do you do you think the state would pay for that?
Okay, good question, so we have been working with Caltrans over the last week, to see if we could secure some initial funding. Uh, we're hoping to have an answer before this meeting, although we heard back from the latest app, and they have a meeting at eight AM tomorrow to discuss it. We have actually had a formal request to increase the budget in the event. That we, some of these, unfortunately, we don't know the answer.
Yes.
Now.
No, are you sorry? Okay, okay, um, if us, if sidewalks, I, when you said sidewalk, I thought you were going where I'm interested in. If a sidewalk were on the north side of Edwards from Hector down. That would solve the the safety issue, wouldn't it?
About that as well, because I know that we've talked about that being a long-term plan, I think it's. I think there was a walk right there that was crosswalk, maybe even necessary.
Conceivably, if we could find a way to fund the sidewalk, we could leave the signs in place. If we could get on our horse and ride and not take years to do this. Uh, and that conceivably, we could resolve this without being legally exposed or having someone get hurt.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that.
I think that's a really, really good point, so I agree.
The graphic earlier, so this is the only connection. So that's a significant, it's a significant crossing, that was no longer the only way. Pedestrian route to get downtown.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah. At some point, the sidewalks are going to go in, this may be when we really need to bite the bullet and do it. So that we can resolve the uh the view shed issue and take those signs down and keep the populace safe anyhow.
Yeah, I like that idea, and I have written down sidewalks underlined as well, because in the past. You know, folks did, we had a lot of resistance to sidewalks in certain parts of town, and yet Edwards would be a great place to do it, and if we had done that, then we might not, you know. We still need a way to get across, that's why I still think maybe one of them down there makes sense for the school kids going down to the harbor and so forth, but. But, um, maybe we wouldn't immediately, so if we had a plan to put in a sidewalk, maybe that would be enough.
Yeah, as far as the Galindo and Edward's crossing, that's certainly one that I would not recommend taking that out, that is a completely different situation, given the curvature of the road there. Um, so I think that is a absolutely warranted improvement for the safety.
We could reduce the side of it and make it less. Or or can we not do it there?
I wouldn't necessarily recommend it, if you wanted a slimmer profile there, I probably could reduce the solar panel system on top and maybe.
Okay, other comments from the council before?
I I I wanted to share just a couple of things with.
Sure.
My fellow council members.
This is a council meeting.
So I finally got around to reading the local road safety plan.
Yeah.
Which is, um, one of the springboards for, um, the city getting these these kind of lights. I don't know if any, if you guys have had a chance to read it, but it was pretty interesting, and one of the, um. First things is, right at the end of the executive summary at the front. Um, they mentioned specifically the sensitivity of signs in Trinidad. Yeah, uh, that that has to be examined very carefully. With a circumspect approach. Um, so then, it also shows that. When they reached out to the community for ideas about how to make things safer. Um, two comments were made about, one about we should have a crosswalk at Hector and Edwards, and one. It said we should have one at Galindo. And, um, the accident history is also explained from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one. There were two traffic accidents in Trinidad, both over at the main entrance into town. Main Street and Patrick's Point Scenic there. Um. So that's just some of the background information that I wanted you guys to know, and also, um. Well. Mayor and I and the city manager spoke with, uh, one of the top guys at our insurance carrier. Um, recently, also about this, and they're, they're very committed to. Requirement that there be a paper trail of some type, if we were considering taking the signs down at this point. And, uh, suggested that. Uh, you know, if, that if we had another engineer who could recommend that the signs weren't required, that they weren't, they weren't necessary. That there would be no problem with them continuing to insure us for, you know, anything that happened along, along that road. Um, and I, you know, I tried to. Get into, give us some web room there, and because I personally, the way I read the statute. Um, I think that we could, as legislative body that's mentioned specifically in the statute. We could show with substantial evidence that, um. You know, it wa- it was a sound decision to take them down. But they, of course, don't want to be out on the edge of the legal frontier. Um, you know, exploring the boundaries and so forth, because I'm sure they want to stick with the conventional interpretations and so forth. So they were, um, pretty conservative about that, understandably. But that that was the substance of that discussion. I just wanted to share that with the members of the public, my colleagues.
Thank you, Bryce.
On the L R S T also, the the two collisions you referenced, just want to clear, those are collisions, as you know. And it doesn't have a police force, and so often collisions don't underreported. I'm not saying there are more in Edwards, I'm just saying those numbers are not necessarily accurate, which is why that that document, that process, that was be processed, spent so much time. Talking to stakeholders and putting police responders and others. Too much for your start question.
Well, it was, it was a fair point, you brought up a fair point, you, no, 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 one taken. Okay, but I've lived here for forty years, so I know pretty much every, every time there's traffic.
And I do want to point out too, that the council made the decision to move ahead, and so Josh is just revisiting everything that he's shared with us, I don't. Want, you know, Josh to be kind of the person who's, you know. View is making the decision here, the council's making the decision, so we're, you're providing information to us, so. I appreciate that, and thank you for, you know, kind of being on the hot seat here, but. Any other comments for Josh from the council?
Yes, yeah.
I would like to thank him also, it's a, it's a good, good presentation.
Yes.
Josh, I would like to see like pricing of, um, putting the little flashers in the street, having a small little sign, a small little. Button, and then little flashers in the street, so then we wouldn't be liable if something ever happened in the future.
I could look that in, the the signs would have to say, you know?
We talked about this last time, that's what I was thinking, was that we could just have a little. He has that turns the light on, and then they would go through the street, which we admitted, and we found out was really hard to maintain, I guess, in this climate or something. But then Josh played it, it still has the signs, so it doesn't eliminate the sign.
Yeah, my my understanding. Maybe D C is very clear for R F Bs, they have to be installed with the sign. Put them up without, I believe the road lighting is the same, it's an additional enhancement, it's not the. With other signage.
Uh, Josh, have you any estimate what putting the sidewalk down Edwards would cost?
I, you know, I I don't have on my head, I know that during the A T P project, the Bandwick A T P project, that was one of the options that was looked at. The project was canceled, so I think some of those costs, this, so we need to dig them up.
But it would solve our safety issue.
Certainly, but yeah, pedestrian connectivity and safety, that would still.
I'm not really following that line of reason, would we then not need the crosswalk?
Well, I think right now, I see yellow, but that is the only crossing to connect upper Trinidad to the harbor. There was a sidewalk on the north side of Edward Street. Then essentially a continuation, the sidewalk, the bottom part exists, it could be treated. But the significance of that crossing is in it.
If they're for convenience sake, but it wouldn't have to be.
Not necessarily a destination on that side of the road, so it's possible to cross.
Take the signs down.
Yeah.
Cross.
Take the signs down and put them somewhere else, put them in storage.
Well, let's get going, especially with other cities. But then there's a. Well, now he's saying that the, that that, right, that's all the sidewalks done. And yeah, yeah, so we should talk about whether or not to do. That was in progress. Or mitigate any of that.
And sidewalk never.
We have a plan to build a sidewalk, and we removed those signs, does that mitigate any kind of design?
What's it? It was my, it was my understanding that there was money appropriated for sidewalks by Edwards, and, uh, there was some, uh, public, uh, pushback on it.
We did, yeah, we got a lot of pushback back then.
That that proposal was, as I recall, sidewalks on the south side of Edwards, so property owners. It wasn't public right away, that was considered over, perceived the fact that it was property. Essentially the grand plan out of time.
All right, well, so we have some things to think about, do we want to go ahead and move then to, are we ready to move to public comment then?
I think so.
Okay. All right, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
We'll now open, thank you for bearing with us, and we have this dialogue back and forth, you can kind of see how we're trying to think about this. Please, uh, come to the podium if you'd like to help us do this decision-making.
And it's, uh, I think, hey, Hector. Um, so I thought. So, would you? I have, I, they're just individual pages that all go together, so I think they look at it, I, I'm looking at a lot of data. Uh, so the discussion about temporary speed humps took place. I've been working on this, the overwhelming majority of people in town were opposed, the conversation shifted to the idea of conducting a traffic study. But no one considered the data showing that speed humps ruin the slowdown motorists, no one acknowledged that there's no federal pedestrian crash out of below twenty-five miles per hour. Instead, the former city manager asked two council members to survey ocean and view streets, they found the majority in favor of installation, so the speed humps went in. Based on feelings rather than facts, and even now, we can still drive over the speed humps at twenty miles per hour or faster if you don't mind damaging your suspension. This set, this set a type of precedent in Trinidad, streets can be decided on what happens with their own improvements, with no data required. Last month, I presented the council with a list of names of residents opposed to the four lighted crosswalk signs on Hector and Wood and Edwards. Since then, five more residents have reached out to me with concerns, and there are still more I have yet to speak with. We will not accept the justification that this issue was posted on the website, and that if it didn't show up, too bad. We rolled out the red carpet for ocean and view residents, put up signs effectively telling the rest of us that we aren't welcome to drive down the streets. And frankly, showed the rest of us a dismissive and disrespectful attitude. This is a rift in our community that is widening, and the more people I see with, going through that ocean and view, more people. Think talking about why the streets are receiving preferential treatment. The council has already acknowledged that a mistake was made and not properly engaging the community regarding the crosswalk signs. We all know that, had residents been properly informed, they would not have supported the signs. So the council is now looking for the clear choice, remove the signs or remove the speed humps. In my view, you have forfeited your ability to turn the bridge to the broader community for support, and you undermine the wishes of the larger population to accommodate only the wishes of the residents on ocean and view. And that's the choice that I think exists, either you. Individual streets get to decide what happens, or the community in large gets to wait, but the decision on ocean and view set that precedent. Residents directly impacted by the four crosswalk signs on Edwards, but they're gone. They were little room for removal of the signs, and they were clearly awaiting further action. Now let's address the improper use of public safety as a justification for these measures. I have brought a spreadsheet from the National Safety Council, and I strongly encourage you to visit their website and spend more time considering their data. Do you know where children are most often killed as pedestrians in private driveways and blockages, not at intersections? These would be the data in the spreadsheet, using the school and stories of children safely crossing the street, of emotional appeals as mitigative and not grounded in the actual risks, strictly. Do you know what the chance of us being killed, hit killed in a pedestrian crash at any intersection in our rural community? It says zero, 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 four, five percent, zero point, zero, zero, four, five, four, five percent. Right, because this is three hundred pedestrian deaths deaths in rural communities, that is sixty-six million. That's that sixty-six million people. It's only the chance that was to zero point zero zero, zero, six, five percent. That is based, this is why I said where, when the engineer was up, it was up because it's matters, and rural communities, R F Bs only allow a max thirty percent deduction. Dust street hit rates, right, it's not ninety-eight percent, it's thirty percent max, so. This doesn't even account for the fact that seventy-five percent of these collisions occur at night. And y'all know how many people walk around Trinidad at night, almost none, it's certainly not children. This is not a victory for public safety, it's a rounding error, I just want to show you this number again, this is how much safer we are, instead of. This is not a victory for public safety. It's a rounding error. I just want to show you this number again. This is how much safer we are instead of forty-five, forty-five, I don't know how to pronounce this. Twenty thousand of percent safe, but it's resulted in signs. I think the insurance company could let that go. For comparison, the risk of dying from a fall in the entire country of three hundred and thirty million is half a percent. Okay, so obviously we have much greater risk of tripping and falling in town and dying than getting hit in the crosswalk at any time of day. As you may know, I am deeply involved in the community. I recently helped organize the claim beach run, received it as a top priority at all runners. We took every precaution, including delaying the race by an hour to ensure everyone's wellbeing. So believe me when I say that the claim of public safety being a driving force here is not only ridiculous, it's insulting. Especially when anyone with any sense knows that the Galindo crosswalk is a dangerous spot because it's located on the blind bird. I certainly hope the schools are planning on taking children across that street, hoping that some blinking lights will help a speeding truck who comes around the corner stop at, at the right time. It's also deeply frustrating here that the minor inconvenience of waiting five fewer seconds to cross Edwards justifies many views. Damaging the town's charm and violating our own ordinances. Above all, I won't stop fighting for the removal of signs for the sake of the brunette family. I visited their home last week, they're right down the street from us. And the signs enlarge on every single window facing the water. They glow at sunset and every time the light is low, there's no escaping them. The rocks in the Bay are blocked from view. The brunettes are cherished members of this community and it's deeply upsetting that they have been so disrespected. This community is fractured right now, fractured by the inconsiderate installation of signs, by the blatant theoritism shown to ocean and view streets and by the disregard for those of us on Hector, on Wood and Edwards. These signs were poorly conceived, not properly presented to the community and are now being duly defended. For the sake of community harmony, I urge you to do the right thing and remove them immediately. Not only is this the right thing to do, it will also show a tremendous amount of respect to those of us who are marginalized by these actions.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Barry of Edwards and I'm visiting Trinidad. Let me preface my remarks by acknowledging that you are all here out of the interest of your cultural service community. You're here in limited capacities and I appreciate the fact that you're spending a lot of your time and energy giving very thorough issues. You've dealt with issues of the dog leash loops and there, the, water issue, whether high contrails should be open or closed, short-term rental disputes. I mean, these are all things you guys have to deal with on a regular basis and I appreciate that. And now we're kind of here for yet another one, though. The issue of whether or not there needs to be additional signage on Edwards, nor to make Edwards safe. Now, safety is an important thing. I think everybody acknowledges that, especially for our children and members of our community that maybe don't feel safe. But these signs are simply too tall and too big and too glow in the dark orange and they flash at night and they're unnecessary. I sent to the council last week an email, I think you have all received, I hope you have. And it kind of highlights the five points that I think are important and I'm not going to read them and go verbatim because that's not for tonight. But if we're just going to people in this audience who haven't read it, basically, as has been pointed out already by Bryce and others, there have been no actions on Edwards. There have been, there have been no reporting near misses. There has been nobody, I think we just heard it tonight, from the engineer that says Edwards without these signs is unsafe. There's been no traffic study done to show that this is an unsafe street without the signs. Simply taking the signs down doesn't then make the street unsafe. The second point is, it's also been raised again, is government code eight thirty point six, the design immunity that public entities enjoy. When they put all the roles and they have an engineer and a reasonable plan. And it's adopted by discussion and exercising authority at a municipality, design immunity. So there will be design immunity for that street, whether the signs are up or down. So that's really not an issue. The whole, the fear that I think people are sensing that we could get sued, something that isn't going to happen. And we could, I could defer even to Mr. To the lawyer over there, who could probably explain that as well. Thirdly, the signs, by just a plain reading of them violates our own ordinances. They're too big, they're too tall, they're too everything. And I had to hear constructively how somehow the signs that city puts up are imbued from their own regulations. If I were to try to, there's something like that in my house, it wouldn't get very far. It'd be taken down immediately. I guess lastly, the, I'm here to hear alternatives. And I'm a little bit frustrated because we have not heard really any alternatives from the staff report that we received that basically was written by Josh. That simply said, well, what we have is what we have and that's all I can recommend. Oh yeah, we can tweak it a little bit. We can make it six inches shorter or twelve inches if we put it on the other side. But heck, we're not getting rid of the bright orange thing and we're certainly not going to get rid of the flashing lights. And that's not helpful. That's not constructive for this organization. We need, we need alternatives. I mean, if I were to do a simple show of how many people are in favor of this and how many people are against it, I added up, the, the number of people who wrote in today, and I think you probably did too, maybe you didn't. But Gabe sent it around and as of this morning, there were ten letters that were supporting removing these things and four against. And the ten letters represented thirteen voices and the four letters represented five voices. I mean, that's what, two to one, three to one? And at the prior meeting, there were only two people who, I mean, there were like six or seven people who spoke about, let's get rid of these things. Nobody arrived here and said, yeah, let's keep them. I really think we need to keep them. I mean, if you just look at the, where we're all going with this, the community does not need these. And I, we're not getting any assistance from the engineering side here. I am a lawyer, as you can probably guess from the way I've been speaking. I've hired any number of engineers in lawsuits exactly like this, where people, you know, potential lawsuits for someone who were to get hurt or anything. And the engineers are all over the board on what is reasonable under the circumstances. I don't think it's fair for, lawyer, for the engineer today to say, this is it and this can only be it and this, we have to stick with this. I think if we were to take a step back, get assistance from a second opinion as to what else could be done. There besides these large signs, smaller signs, the signs with the lights in the, in the pavement, I think that would be very helpful. Because I don't think we're in a position today to make any real decisions. At least if I was sitting in the shoes, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. I don't think we have enough information. I asked all this information from communications with the staff the last twenty-three weeks. We need this information, this meaning. And all we got was the four-page staff report written by Josh, who's not necessarily independent. I mean, this is his design that's being critiqued here. And he's, he's wary of stepping off of where he's already taken his turf. I understand that, but I don't think we're stuck with that. And I guess my last point, and I know I'm going on, is those, the, the pictures that Josh showed at the last meeting, that show kind of in real world, you know, where they're at, and he called them, Jeff, I don't know what the term he used, picture simul, simulations, picture simul simulations. When we, when he showed those at the last meeting in January, a month ago, I said to myself, I, I never seen this before. And so I went back and I, I watched that part of the, of the video record. And Justin, well, those had been presented in the March nineteen, two thousand twenty-three meeting that we, that you were at. I was not at. And I said, I didn't see them there because I, I went back, so I moved it to March fourteenth, twenty-three. But that, his report and those pictures are not in the file. They are certainly not in the, the documents package that we all received. So nobody, going into the meeting, nobody knew this was going to be presented. And even till today, it's not in there. I had to go back and watch the two-hour, twenty-minute recording of, of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting to even see them for the first time. And so the, and, and I will say, that is the one and only time they have ever been shown to you, you, the city council, or to me, the residents. Okay, that was what, March twenty-three? They're not at the April meeting, they're not at the May meeting, they're not at the June, July, September, October, November. And then what happens in December? They sign the contract with the design drawings already completed. We never saw the final set of drawings that were supposedly what it was going to be. And so when people say, well, you kind of slept on your rights, you guys didn't voice an objection, we were never told until they ran up. And that's why we're now here today. And I apologize if this sounds edgy or like I'm pointing fingers. I don't want it to sound like that. I just think the processes haven't been followed well enough here. Now we're stuck with a bunch of other signs that nobody wants. And I think there are some people who feel strongly that, that we should keep them. But you know, if this was democracy and if the most votes wins, I think that's a losing sign. But I don't think we should, I don't think that's what we should be doing here. I think just because we have the votes, take them down, we should take them down. You have with the people who want from here, who don't feel safe on Edwards. I think we should be looking for compromises. We should be working together, trying to figure out what could be done that'll make everybody happy enough. Maybe you can't make a hundred people up, maybe you make ninety-five people. And what you see presented today from the engineers as to what they think, it's kind of a take it or leave it, it's kind of, you know, my way of the highway. You're not giving us any, any maneuvering room. I think we need to take a step back, figure out how we can all agree on something that's small, that is less obstructive of the views. And, and I, that's, I, I think that's what we need to do.
Thank you. I know this is, I know there's a lot of passion around this, if we can.
I'll try to, I'll try to do it.
Three or four minutes, that would be great. Just because I want to make sure everybody has a chance.
I just have a few points. I want to, I appreciate the presentation. None of the options presented changed the issue. I'm not even talking about resolving the issue. My, in my mind, as a very vested stakeholder in this, none of, none of what was presented changed the actual issue that we have. And so I don't give anything that was brought back. And I, I, I just wonder why that would be even anything we bothered to present it, because it didn't change the issue. It tried to mitigate, but it clearly, as you can see from even his own drawing sales, at what the core issue is, which is what? Point out that, that view, bottom of the view shed, why is that important? Because we haven't really talked about that that much. The property values of my property and the property down the hill for me are impacted by this. Wasn't considered, as we know, was not considered at all as the city made this, made these approvals. Jeff walked very nicely through, you know, the public understanding of the history of it. We've gotten loads of private history or the city history, but, but the public history, I think was very low and stuff like that. But these, these do affect people's property values. And that's something that your insurance company. I want to reiterate something that Jeff said, because this is, as you, as many of you know, this is a very passionate point for me. The process was not followed. The city council made a mistake. And I don't think that's, that's undeniable. They made a mistake in a way that, so a lot of you weren't here for it, some of you were, some of you weren't. The city council made a mistake. When they did it, when they did it the way they did it. Ultimately, it might have landed in the same place. I doubt it would have. Ultimately, it might have landed in the same place. Process that was undertaken was they made a mistake the way they did it. And you guys have to, have to understand that. Very clear from the, from the paper. I also pointed out that we have this discussion about how opposed people were to sidewalks and that our solution would be to put up signs. I'm just going to put that out there, but I think, isn't that sort of a strange thing that it's like, we don't want sidewalks, it cluttered the town. Oh, you know, we'll put up some more signs. It's a really, it's a really strange solution to a problem that people were opposed to at the time with sidewalks. Lastly, there's a lot of stuff thrown around about California law. I would very much suggest that most of the people here should stay away from that. Because most of this is not California law. It is judgment, as we discussed earlier. And I also want to, I know I, I tried to correct from the audience there, apologize for that, but I want to point out that during the presentation that was given, the twenty feet from intersection law, this town is exempted from due to our size. We do not have to follow that California law. Second aspect of California law I want to point out. The state of California has recently changed their jaywalking. They're just, a second while, while I get, get there, but they changed their jaywalking rules. And that you cannot get a jaywalking ticket in the state of California unless you are causing yourself or someone else potential harm. Okay. So what the state of California is doing is giving contradictory, seemingly contradictory guidance, which is they want, very much want pedestrian safety and all this kind of stuff. But they're also saying, hey, pedestrians are smart enough to know when, when they can and can't cross. And I think we need to think about that for this town. There are great sightlines on Edwards. Places that where, where actually have the crosswalks are about the worst places we could have them, if I'm being perfectly honest. Even people who I know, I don't want to name names, but people who I know who are, who are advocates for having all of this. They come down Hector, they turn right down Edwards on the same side, on, on, they make the short right turn. You don't go across the crosswalk and make the short right turn. You know why? Because that side has a wider shoulder. That's where anybody, anybody who lives here is going to walk down that side of the street. I know it's, again, it's not with the flow, it's not against the flow of traffic and all that. That's true for where it's at now, right? And so we're really worried about our, our people in town. Well, we kind of already have a way to walk pretty darn safely down that side of the street. Leave it with that unless there's any questions. Yes?
What's the basis for Trinidad being exempt from the twenty, twenty foot?
It's written in the law. I can't remember the exact population number, but there's, I believe it's a population number if, that's, that, it's if you're less than some number, then you're not going to apply at that law.
Well, I, I wasn't aware of that. It's, it's kind of, it's not really the issue we're talking about here, but it's interesting to know.
I thought it was important because I figured it'd come up again. So.
I just want to add that the U S plus five rule, we use it as five thousand people plus.
All right, thank you. Other public comments?
I, I can ask a question and it's just this, and it's one of those legal questions that I'd love to talk to Bryce and Russ about. We had, we had sidewalks, we had crosswalks there before. If a crosswalk's there before, removed by the council and designed by an engineer. Then that design immunity shouldn't go away because you made addition, because you later decide that something additional might be helpful. Right? You already had immunity. Does your immunity disappear because you make improvements? I don't think so. I could be wrong on that. And separately, just because there is a more safe design, doesn't get rid of your design immunity. I mean, you could put tunnels under the street. But that doesn't, that wouldn't get rid of your design immunity because it could be safer. Doesn't matter whether it's safer or not. So the question really here, and finally, if you have one engineer on a design, say they believe that that's safe. And they've actually looked at the design, absent showing that they're utterly incompetent. You'd get to your design immunity point. Unfortunately, I, I, as an attorney, I had to litigate that if you know Bryce. And that's, that's where the, the ball field stands. But I would be interested in that concept, if your immunity go away if you do something else.
Very convoluted inquiry in the reality of California, the exceptions to design immunity, immunity are almost as great as the protection of the rule itself. Anyway, there's a brand new Supreme Court case relative to the eighteen. Failure to warn, it's problem act in this circumstance where we already have an existing design in place. The short answer on design immunity is this. The council must act reasonably in whatever design you approve, even if that involves removal of traffic control devices. So you need some record of reasonableness.
I was looking at a case today in which they sued the city for putting up essentially the signs you have here, saying that it was leading people to ignore their own safety. And so it's one of those, I mean, can you ever get away with it? The question's really going to be, can you get that as swiftly as possible? And that's going to turn your side.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look at that a bit more. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Other comments from the community, please.
Take Bruce, seven eighty Underwood Drive. Like Bryce, I've lived here forty-eight years now. And I can't call any serious accidents, excuse me, on Edwards. Yours is hot, but here. Certainly no fatalities. His issue for me on Edward Street, perhaps he's got a lot of traffic going up and down the woods and a lot of commercial vehicles, big trucks hauling crap. So those are the real safety issues that I see. I'm going to change it here a little bit. The impetus for safety improvements on Edwards kind of goes back to the elephant. Yeah. In my personal view. the lack of by the city to do anything improve, maintain six Vanwick Trail to twenty ten, twenty fifteen. And led to the point that I right now. Vanwick Trail was and could still be very safe passage. Today. You heard repeatedly from the public, the planet commission meetings, it's the council meetings. There's a seven, having a second on the Trinidad public to fix the Vanwick Trail. Now, I'm going to go to another item on here, which is the pickleball court. I read the sample court on that. Somehow the city got hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars grant funding from Parks and Recreation for that program. But they spent sixty five thousand dollars on pickleball court. Is there any lead move some of that money to fixing trails in town? I mean, seriously, if we can spend sixty five thousand dollars on the we can find sixty five thousand dollars, it'd be still another study on fixing Vanwick Trail, which improves safety in town. What stands right now with flashing lights in the crosswalks, just take out the flashing lights, see the crosswalks there. People see crosswalks if they're driving down the street, they're going to see them at least. But the flashing lights are gross. And they're in the view shifts. I can only imagine if I lived near Anna and Andrew or the Mets houses, or the people that are staying in the apartments behind Eerie. Somebody pushes that darn button at midnight. It's like the Fourth of July going off down there. I mean, it's ridiculous. So two things. They got the flashing lights. The next thing is let's fix the Vanwick Trail. Let's come up with some way to have safe access to the harbor. Don't have to walk down Edward Street. Vanwick Trail is the elephant in the room.
Excuse me, Dick, may I ask you a question? I don't understand about what you're saying. If the Vanwick Trail were operating, you'd still have to walk across.
Sure, we've got sidewalks.
I I don't see how that solves that.
It solves the problem. It solves the problem of walking down Edwards.
Yes, okay, thank you.
That's the that's the main issue there, the safety. Who would want to walk down Edwards Street if he had a nice Vanwick Trail like it used to be? There's there's gotta be a lot of way this affected the approach now. And the reason that thing was canceled back, what in what twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I can't even remember. It was Caltrans, right? I used to work for Caltrans. I know how those things work. The the design on that, and it's no fault of the city engineer. It's the fault of the design standards that Caltrans had for that ramp. It sold your pot wall down there that could accommodate apartments of a Caltrans grant, so you can have multi-modal transportation going down that trail. That's why that thing was so overblown. The issue of cultural resources down there. The city doesn't know anything about what those cultural resources are.
I'm going to have to pull us back. Sorry. Yeah, but but your point is taken that Vanwick is relevant to this discussion and should and your request to bring that up at the council is point taken. Thank you. Other comments on the H sub project? Okay.
Bye, I'm Jenny and thank you for helping me.
I'll see you back.
And there's been some really interesting things said. I really appreciate a lot of them. Dick, thank you for bringing it to Vanwick Trail. I always walk down. My choice because it was nice walking and it is recreational and to walk on the Vanwick Trail, maybe the pickleball and the recreation. Listen, I'm a California native and I moved to Philadelphia. I lived there for two years. People laughed their butts off at me the whole two years I was there because I would stop at every crosswalk at every little picture of the person you walk, don't walk. I'd be stopped waiting. All my friends of you, block ahead me because they're from Philly. They know how to jaywalk. And they would laugh at me. I didn't understand that that's what you were supposed to do in Philly. I was a California girl. I stopped for my head stop and for my to walk and so forth. But my point is people learn. People can learn about jaywalking. They learn about going in crosswalks and drivers can learn when they see someone else at a green when they see the crosswalk. That's a flashing thing to a driver to see stripes on the on the pavement and that's a help. Better flashing than flashing. When I'm driving, I'm watching the road too. I don't always look up high. So that's one. Let's remember that a long time ago, we used to have a sign at the intersection, this may be before a lot of you lived here, we had a sign at the intersection by the gas station that said oncoming traffic has the right of way. For the people coming down, the young people coming down from the freeway entrance. You didn't have to worry about some idiot turning left in front of you as you're coming down and you don't have a stop sign. You didn't have to worry about some person jumping their stop sign when you thought you hit the right. Because that sign said oncoming traffic has the right of way. But our city attorney at the time, I believe it was Nancy Island, for the history, said, oh, that's meaning of lights. The city can't move driving in lights. We might be liable. So let's think about that when we have all this discussion about what the city's legal indemnity or or you know, problems for the city because of making changes. So kind of have a common sense versus the fear issue. And the last thing is when people make mistakes, that's a sign of a big person to be able to say, I made a mistake. I had an idea. It wasn't a great idea. I made a mistake and now I'm going to fix it. Or maybe I'm going to be humble and say, Dee, I have a dumb idea. I did this all the time. My editor in that union is wonderful because he makes me look much smarter than I am because he fixes my errors when I send in my writing. He corrects my grammar or he corrects my misspellings of my titles. I'm happy he does that. It makes me look good. Thank you to my editor. But let's let's give some people some room here to be able to say, hey, you made a mistake. Let's try this.
Thank you. Eli.
Just wanted to comment that mainly because I was mentioning before as the city manager. So regarding Ocean and View and also regarding Edward Street. So what we did then with Ocean and View and also Edwards and the number of other streets in town. Through GHD, they hired a firm that went ahead and gave us traffic counts and also speeding for a number of the streets. And and that's how we ended up coming up with the fact that violations and the degree of violation that happened on Ocean View. Secondly, the issue with Ocean of View was to ask people if they wanted the speed humps on the road or not. Not the signage about the speed. That that was not asked. It was it was asked about if you wanted to have the speed humps on the road. So street signage all around town, we've never asked, you know, was it okay if we put up some street signage or are there issues about it? So I just wanted to make that main distinction that it was the speed humps that we were addressing. And then Katie, you made a good point. You're going from the up part, the upper part of town. You're going to have to cross Edwards one way or another to whether you get to Vanwick or you you go down to the harbor or whatever. You still have to cross Edwards. So either way.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? On each of our. All right, I don't see any others, so I'll bring it back to the council. You now heard from Josh, we had some discussion and you heard from the public. Where, what do you think?
Well, I'd like to thank everyone who sent in letters and made comments or orally tonight. And I guess I don't have to tell you, you know, how tough this can be when you have lots of people from your own town, you know, trying to persuade you one way or the other on something. Doing the best we can. But I, after listening to everything and all the time I spent myself, you know, reading the cases about design immunity and all the ins and outs and talking to our insurance company. I feel like it would have been a lot better to notify the people on Edwards about the, you know, the plans to put up these signs, even though it probably is not legally required because they're safety signs. But still, the precedent was kind of set, even though as Eli pointed out, nobody asked us, do you want a sign to go along with your speed bump? Just speed bumps are not. So I I think we should have done that and it is true that signs are extremely heavily regulated under our ordinances. So that's that's sort of, it should have given us a heads up, you know. And and also views of the harbor are heavily protected, you know, when it when it comes to signs particularly. If you it occurred to me today as I was looking at the photographs of the signs and contrasting them with the Katie Smokehouse and escape signs that are, you know, grandfathered in because they're they're so old, but they they're so different. They're just like night and day, you know, and they they actually kind of fit into the scenery in the background and all that. But I really can't say this thing for the flashing signs. And as Josh pointed out, and I appreciate him conceding it openly that the signs are not legally required. We can have the signs without the crosswalk. I mean, we can have the crosswalk without the signs. What we need to keep our insurance company happy is an engineer to say, yes, that's a reasonable thing. So just like make professional opinions like a doctor, if you get a doctor's opinion, oftentimes you get another opinion because professionals have a wide range of you know, viewpoints and way of analyzing things. So where I'm where I'm at right now is I feel like we should see if we can consult another engineer and who will review the the safety, the road safety plan, look at the site of factors that, you know, were mentioned about lack of prior accidents and so forth. And see if he or she can come up with a an opinion that would make our, keep our insurance company happy because we have to do that. We can't we can't take the risk of losing coverage on Edward Street down there. So that's what I'm feeling right now.
Other thoughts?
The city does not need these signs to keep us safe. Never did. Dick Cruz pointed out, he's lived there forty eight years, never had an issue. I I believe that, you know, I I walk down that street all the time. I don't choose walking over those where it tells me that it's crossed because it's out of my way. I choose to cross in the other areas. So yeah, I would propose to remove all four signs and create a community advisory committee to find a proper solution to meet our unique city's needs. That's what I would, that's what I would propose tonight.
Well, do you do you understand, Jack, that our insurance company says in order to take the signs down now, you have to get an engineer to say that that would not be an unreasonable thing to do. So from my perspective, it's important that we that we find that piece to the puzzle. I mean, I I agree, they should be taken down and we need to do it a certain way. Otherwise, we.
Yeah, could we ask for our city attorney who's who's here tonight to weigh in?
We could. Pleasure of the chair.
Are you asking him to weigh in on whether or not the second engineering opinion would would suffice with the insurance company? Because I think that's an insurance company question, right? That's a Sarah question. But I'm not sure.
Well, let's ask if he's here. You want targets, you have here to answer the question, right?
Just trying to straighten line.
Certainly, as the council would understand, be reluctant to give a legal opinion in open form such as this on something that may have an impact on the city's future life. That stated, one thing that is absolutely clear about the dangerous immunity protocol and the design in, excuse me, the design immunity protection from dangerous condition. Government Committee, three point says, that if you act with reasonableness and you have a factual basis and some evidentiary record to support whatever determination you make. With that understanding, I would endorse what the insurance company agent told us. The council member standing, I think his proposal is very.
Thank you, Ross.
I I'd be in favor of your suggestion, Bryce, and getting a another opinion and seeing if we can be protected legally and take down the signs. But that still leaves us with the problem of children walking down Edwards, people who have disabilities walking down Edwards. And that's why I I'd really like to see us moved with energy towards a sidewalk that continues the sidewalk that's on the upper part of Edwards, continue it all the way down. Then the the people who need protection, even though they haven't been hit by a car yet, won't be hit by a car because we've got a sidewalk. But I would be in favor of taking down the signs if we can get the legal support we need. And then but and then proceeding with this next step.
Do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'm on board with all that's been suggested. I mean, I think it's really important to make sure that we are covered with our insurance company and just getting a second opinion. I'm all on board with that. I think the signs do need to come down. I came on the board, our on town council to represent the school and me as a mom, and I have to say that I don't think Edward Street is safe for children. I don't think it's safe for people. I don't think there's a clear walking path down to the beach and we need to create a a solution here. So removing these signs isn't creating a solution. It's just a temporary fix. And, you know, I've walked with my two year old down, you know, to the beach and I just, I don't think it's safe. I don't think it's safe for all of the whole and, you know, to have, to go against what the school has suggested for me is, is, you know, I just feel bad doing that, but I think it's the right thing to do considering all the feedback from the community. And then the majority of the community doesn't want these signs and I can totally understand everybody why you don't want signs. Flashing lights, they're noxious and there's plenty of things to consider there. So, yeah, I'd like to remove the signs and go through the protocol to remove them. But, yeah, definitely will also want to encourage to find a better solution. And I'd encourage us to create an advisory board or get the residents on Edwards together and perhaps have a little meeting with you all and talk about a better solution including Vanwick Trail and or just easy ways to get pedestrians down to the beach. And I guess my other concern too is that I think that we'll see that transportation is going to change quite a bit in the next ten to fifteen years. You're going to see a lot more motorized segways and lots of different more creative ways for people to be getting around town. And that's something we need to consider too in terms of our long term vision for Edward Street. And I don't know, I mean, I always hear about fatal. And I don't know, I mean, I always hear about fatalities in Arcata all the time, about people getting killed, going through, you know, all kinds of crosswalks, so I don't think that we should just assume that we're immune from that happening here just because there's a lack of precedence, I think. Yeah, there's definitely the potential that people can get distracted driving down Edwards, and a serious accident could happen, and we'd need for that to happen, of course.
So I have a little bit of a different perspective in that I like the idea, I think I agree with you all, except I'm not quite ready to say that I would, my goal would be to get a second opinion to take the signs out. I think for me, my goal would be get a second opinion, as Mr. Barry I think pointed out, that you know, are there some other alternatives, and if those alternatives include taking signs out and replacing with something else, then I would like to hear about that, I think. Although we've heard a lot of public opinion against the signs, I also hear a lot for them, and I think the real controversy in some ways is for the folks that live on Edwards that are directly impacted by them, in their view, it is particularly difficult, right? And for the people who are not, who are on the other streets, a, a number of folks have told me how much they, they like them, and I've really implored several people to put in their public comments, and they were concerned that they would, their neighbors wouldn't be upset with them, so they didn't want to kind of put in their, their comments that they feel safer having the crosswalks, so. Anyway, so I, I'll just say personally, I'm not quite ready to say, I think you heard me earlier, I don't love the signs, I think I could easily see myself saying, take them out, but I'd like to get a second opinion, so I guess if someone has a motion that we would get, you know, some alternatives from another engineer, and if you want to make a, a motion that you want to remove the signs, that is welcome as well, so. I don't know if we need to make a motion, or?
Well, one, one point I forgot to
Okay.
Yeah, one point I forgot to mention also is that while I want to get a second opinion, I want to put a limit on how much we're going to spend to, to get it.
Same.
Because I don't think that would be covered by the grant, the same grant that's funded. You know, so.
That's a good point, yeah.
I was thinking neighborhood of five thousand dollars.
Can we?
I don't think that's going to cover it, to be honest.
What do you, what do you think?
What do you think, the forty, forty-five thousand dollars?
But Josh, how much time he spent creating three alternatives, which is a new design?
Sure, yeah, but you're asking this.
How about you're asking your father?
Okay, I can't have a back and forth.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just giving an estimate, it could be less, I, I want to, you know. Could be less, just my experience.
Well, we want, we both know who's out there for how much money until we try.
We try, yeah.
It takes several times to find the sweet spot. I just feel it's important, because as I understand it, we came into this twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget with like a how much of a shortfall, forty thousand? Two thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand already in the hole, and so we can't just, you know, spend money like drunken sailors. Or, you know, everything we want, so.
So maybe there's a motion, you know, with a contingency that we don't spend more than, you know, give it a ceiling.
Right, because this engineer would just be reviewing reports that have already been made essentially, and looking at the site physically.
Yeah, maybe some of the ideas, like, you know, we talked about this last time, like I mentioned the in-road option, and the little pylon things, which I also had, you know, we see out here from the school.
Well, okay, okay, all moves that we, we seek a second opinion on the issue of whether road can be deemed reasonably safe with the crosswalks, but without the flashing signs. And we, we, I would ask for a spending limit of seven thousand five hundred, so we can see if there's anybody out there who can do it for that much. If not, we can look at it again. Obviously, the signs are going to have to stay up in the meantime until we get this sorted out, but anyway, that would be my motion at this point.
Would, would Josh be able to give us that opinion and say?
I already, I asked him to do that earlier, and he said, no, he would not. Have to look somewhere else.
A second to Bryce's motion, or do you have any? Suggested revisions?
I think that motion, good motion.
All right.
Get a second opinion and make sure that we're on board with our insurance carrier.
Okay.
Now that would be one obstacle.
But in the, in the bigger planning
Questions about the motion I mentioned?
I think we should get to the bigger picture, because, yeah, Van Wick is a definite possibility to take the pressure off Edward Street. Sidewalks are another possibility, but right now we got to figure out what to do with the signs.
I do need to call for a vote because there is a motion and a second on the floor, but I get the feeling that Josh, did you want to interject early quick?
Further discussion.
Yeah, further discussion.
Thank you. I'm just thinking about the timing of the current project, the current project, the contractor on the work, work is one hundred percent complete at this point, we are looking for supplemental funding, potentially to Caltrans that the council wants to take some action tonight. I'm just wondering if work is a concern, is that if it's delayed, maybe direction on what to do with the current project?
Well, there's, all, all your work on those signs talking about is completed, isn't it?
It is, but we've requested supplemental funding from Caltrans under the grant, in the event they want to make any changes to the current installation.
Same like that.
It doesn't seem like
So, so what we're giving up then potentially is their ability to revise those signs, but from the council that that taking.
Well, if you're, you're going to be with them tomorrow morning, buddy.
They have an term.
They're going to be in turn. Well.
They could just pause.
You don't have to, you know, we can sort of let them know, let them know that we decided not to proceed, so just revise our request, just really to make the city aware of that. Project would essentially be a hundred percent complete, and whatever council, whatever decisions council makes on general fund expenditure.
Okay, all right, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Josh, and so does that change anybody's motion in second? Because you're essentially
You were a little bit different, but I'm not moving it in mind, you could say it again.
Actually, I, I'd like to follow, just for a second, Josh. Could you also just let them decide whether they're going to cut loose the extra money, and if and when? In other words, tell it later, well, as it turns out, the council's got a new direction it wants to go or something.
Yes, a little challenging, you know, the city has to maintain the grant, so there are, there are some administrative responsibilities for keeping the project going. Possibly conflict, one challenge of we, we would need to close the contractor out. Pay attention to them for their work. That definitely will completion of the project currently. I think it can be done, it's not ideal, I'll play that. The other thing is, quickly mentioned, the design immunity is somewhat quite a bit, and and with a challenge, I'm concerned you take this on, I don't know, but I understand it could be a challenge, because from our perspective, what you're asking is how consulting to take on that line of things. They would essentially be playing the shoulders for you. Not saying it's not possible, but
Yeah, I, I think that really overstates it, because under, under the design immunity concept, we have that engineer. We have to sign, without a doubt. If it's something that's taken down the, you know, previously approved safety.
Yeah, I think what he's saying is that they might want to take.
Yeah, the engineer would take a lot of it.
But we'll find out.
My one, that's a potential, that's a potential issue.
So. Any other questions for Josh, this would don't want, it doesn't, we've got about seven more agenda, yes. Yes. Let me, sorry, let me open the public comments briefly, and
It's a very quick, I'm closing the contractor out, I, I noticed they, they redid the curb down at the window, and the water still goes down the sidewalk, so if you're, if, if that's part of the closeout, I would consider that you might want to
Fix that.
Continue to look at.
Okay, thank you.
I think they're still planning to improve that, I could be wrong.
I just wanted to make sure that was on your side.
I'm aware of that, I think they're still planning to try to fix that thing. Yeah, no, there's, there isn't any more plans after that was repaired order to get it into design tolerance essentially, but it's a tough situation, and we talked about this last time, you have a, a road on very steep grade. Make some improvements, something up the ramp, extend it could, and extend it rotator behind it to prevent erosion. Expect that in the water. I thought I was running over that, it's not, unfortunately, it's not uncommon. Look at additional permits, I'm not saying we can't, especially with supplemental funding.
Okay, so, did that change either the motion or the second, or you're so comfortable moving ahead?
No, I'm not, I wanted to ask you to repeat what you had, a particular thing you said, and I've lost it.
I'm sorry, I don't remember what I said at this point, but do you? Thank you.
He wanted a, a second opinion that looks at more options than just trying to
Remove the signs.
Essentially justify removing signs.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine if we have that, but I would like to see if they came up with something else that made it visible, but like you said, for example.
It's going to be a lot more, it's going to be a lot more expensive.
That's true.
Go that way.
Trying to imagine that, what that would be, how you shrink the giant.
Well, I mean, the underground lighting, for example, was one idea that, you know, but we found out that we had to have the signs, so maybe the crosswalk isn't enough, I'm, I'm hesitant because just, so we, we are essentially then making a vote to take the signs out and would, to look for an engineer that will.
No, we have to do the engineer first.
That's fine, yeah, I'm fine with that. I, I would like a chance to vote once I hear the alternatives, personally, because I just like to have the information.
Well, yeah, because the engineer might say, you know, sorry, I can't come up with that, can you?
Yeah, exactly, or comes up with something else, okay.
Great, I think the, I mean, I, I don't know if we kind of flushed out the idea of moving them to a different location too, so that impact what Josh, you know, closing out the contract. And then, do we know how much it will cost to remove them altogether, and is that something we need to consider for Josh to be able to?
Yeah, if we had, he had mentioned a few thousand, I think, or something like.
Yeah, the cost may locate, I think, from around five thousand, so I just if you wanted to just remove them and not put them anywhere else, we did confirm Caltrans that would not be eligible cost to the project anymore. To be responsible for the cost, and I believe they were
My feeling on that is if we end up doing that, we should just do it in-house with our city staff. I don't think you need an engineer to take the signs down, personally.
The, the, the cost though is, you would not be able to reimburse the cost and install the signs to Caltrans.
I understand that, but we pay our city staff every day to be here and do various tasks around town, so.
I think what he's trying to say is that we're paying ten thousand dollars per sign, and if we remove them, I'm gonna look for that ten thousand.
Oh, to reimburse the funders?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing we didn't really talk about, is that, that we have to reimburse.
Maybe. That's just not what the contract said, you guys keep saying that, but we've reviewed the contract, both I and Jeff, and the contract doesn't say that if you get, take the signs down, you have to reimburse Caltrans. Something does not say that, if you don't receive the money and you change the plans before it's installed, that reimbursed Caltrans. But look at the contract, I think you're just incorrect, I mean, we can have, have the attorney give you a legal opinion on it.
But I think you're wrong.
Well, I, I asked Caltrans, it's not my opinion, I asked them local systems, and that's what they told me. Said that they were going to bring, they said that they would bring it up with the program coordinator tomorrow on their call, because I also asked, is there a duration coming? A year could have seemed, I'm just giving information that was told.
I would just appreciate, like, I think I indicated in my letter, if that's how friends position, ask the attorney write a letter, that may be their position. It just gives them what the contract says, but that may be the position.
So that's another thing that we
Yeah, how about relocating, because Mary mentioned that there was a really good spot for these earlier.
I think that potentially be eligible, yeah.
All right, so we still have a motion on the table in a second. Do you want to repeat your motion really quick, just so the other councils know, and then I'm going to call about?
Yeah, I'm moving that we seek a second engineering opinion about whether we can take the signs down and still have a reasonably safe road design in town, and I am suggesting that we put a cap of seven thousand five hundred that we can spend at this point on that.
Okay.
A second, yep.
All right, all those in favor? All right, okay, so moves. Thank you, everyone, for your considered discussion and your patience as we work through this process, and, yes, Josh?
There was a couple other action items on, then related to this, I think we've maybe made a decision on one of them, which was authorization to some other industry, with instructing contract when we're coming up with a board, it sounds like that's not under perceived. The other one was actually in relation to our contract, it's a non-cost, future cost we may incur, we don't know what those are, but we want to give the city manager the ability
So if you look at your staff report, the recommendations are one through three.
Yeah, and I can clarify a little bit, this last meeting, I did have an amendment came before council, and that was in there to close out the job essentially. But there's been some ongoing work over the last month. Efforts have been towards a project, is that minimizing effects of the city.
Where on the agenda is this?
It's in the same item, if you look at the staff recommendations, there were one, two, three. There, the first page of the staff, basically the staff report for item number two.
Item three in the staff recommendation.
That's item number three, to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute necessary contract amendments, look G H P at H C P project up to a maximum of fifteen thousand, so. So we're authorizing, like, you can see what?
Yeah, we, we, it was written all opening, because we didn't know the direction you were going to take. If we're literally going to close this project out, it's less than five thousand dollars.
So this is just a, we're closing it out?
Yeah, like, if you want to make
Hey, what we owe, so far, okay. So, I think I could, you want to make a motion? Probably, let's wait till then. Yes, well, exactly, motion, and so did you guys hear what Josh said, Bryce, and Joe, so he, he's basically saying that this is an authorization to close out what we already owe, essentially.
Yeah, there's no ongoing work.
Not additional work, this is just paying the balance, basically, is what I understand.
Correct, if there's no This includes the extra work that they have done into this meeting and, and close out.
We need a mo, do you need a motion?
Yes, sir. Jack said
Well, I'll make a motion to close out our agreement.
Authorize the city manager, if you read item number three, Jack, that would be great.
So, I authorize the city manager to negotiate and So, um, I authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute, execute necessary contract amendment. With GHD for the HSIP project up to a maximum of. Five thousand?
Yeah, yes, that's, yeah.
I second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. We need a five-minute start break during the public. Okay, let's take five. We need, uh, and. We're done.
Nobody else can answer her.
Yeah.
Do I drop like, I mean, children before you left?
Yeah. I forgot. We can't even create a last five comments. Okay, I'm. Follow by you move. That's it.
They walk by that house, they're always. Issue happened. Several. Yeah, this is all you. They just.
Why aren't we in all these things?
And they said it's. Be an already. You see. When that's. Yeah.
That's there. That I, that I can't.
Like a false.
All right. I totally. All right, they're going to, uh, we're gonna continue on. And we're gonna go to Mary Jo. And I guess the question is, at some point, we may just have to need for some of the agenda to future meeting by well-schooled.
You serve the council of Florida, Mary.
It's, yeah, it's almost nine, so I'm getting, I get the side eye. All right. Just got, so the next one is, uh, item number three is discussion decision regarding the revised draft MOU between the city of Trinidad and West Haven Community Services District. Um, and this is regarding the water system emergency intertie. And so, um, I'll turn it over to staff.
Evening. So there's just a few staff recommendations, um, in our staff report, but just a little bit about how.
Excuse me, it's been requested that you talk right into the mic.
Okay. Um, so really, just wanted to give you an update on the intertie project. Um, it's been solved for a substantial amount of time because of the burn and the process. Changed the design, we're still working on, um, we have a deadline to complete that April. Um, and right now it's coming before the council, and this is just a draft, this is not to be approved. It's the ML, uh, MOU, so the memorandum of understanding. Right now, we've been operating under a interim, um, MOA. And now we just need to readdress it, look at a few different things within the MOU itself. Um, one of them, a notable change like putting here is the cost sharing. Um, so I believe it was in twenty twenty-two, the council originally, um, agreed to fifty fifty percent split. That's how you wanted to proceed for the cost overruns. West Haven came back, they said, no, we want to do the cost sharing proportionally or smaller. Let's only waste sixty-six, one six-six percent for West Haven Chair and then, I'm sorry, city. And then thirty-three percent for the share for what I'm given. Um, we'd like to revisit that and go back to the fifty fifty. And the reason is, is because. Um, the shift in roles and responsibilities have changed, and so the city actually is going to be taking on a lot more responsibility. And we've also already put in fifteen thousand because we've run over budget and planning, so we already. Essentially have a, a credit towards that cost overrun. Um, and so at this point, I just would like council to discuss the cost sharing change. Direct staff to, uh, begin negotiations with West Haven, and that needs to happen very soon. And hopefully this time. And then I also need city council to designate a subcommittee, uh, with a minimum of three members. With the power to authorize the declaration, uh, of emergency and respond to operators in the event of activation of the emergency intertie. Um, and staff is recommending that the council designate the city manager, chief plant operator, and city.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Angela? I have none, I have, this makes sense to me. The MOU of that.
I'm not really, I read the MOU, um, understand what you're. Could be doing. Do you have, have you gotten any sense of how open West Haven's gonna be to. 调节ing the cost share?
Uh, I've. I will tell you that we haven't heard anything negative. So that's a positive.
All right.
Well, no, until we try, I guess.
Yeah.
He did, he did, they did contact us, we got some communication. Uh, they agreed that, uh, the MOU needed some work and said that's what we're trying to do, and so they are looking forward to getting to work on this.
Okay.
Oh, and I was just gonna say too, so within that MOU, I was also very, I was also very, very, West Haven has a right, and is not final as well. So they are aware because the roles and responsibilities in that have to be addressed. So, and that's, if you're looking at the additional supplemental documentation that I provided, um, I believe it exhibits the. Uh, the primadocacy of the intertie roles and responsibilities. That also reflects everything that needs to be included.
Very well. Okay. All right, uh, let me see if there are any questions or comments from the public then about the, um. MOU. Your type project. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council where we will entertain a motion.
I'll move staff recommendation. Of number one and two. Authorized to negotiate. One subcoming, that's just correct.
Thank you.
All right, and our study is seconding, seconding that. All those in favor? Hi. Thank you, thanks for the continued work on this, you guys. So it'd be great if we have an emergency need for water to get this stuck. And I know it's been a long project, so. Okay, great. So the next item is, uh, the discussion decision regarding improvements to the racket court. Uh, and through the per capita grant, and this one, we have received a fair amount of public, some amount of public. As well as in the room tonight, so. Remember?
Um, so really, this is also just an update of where we're at. Um, we're in a position to go out there this spring. Um, but bringing it back to the council, um, since we. Can't afford it, and there was some complaints regarding noise, but I can see a whole lot of people for this project. Um, I provided, you know, some information in the subcourt in regards to sound. Um, and I don't know if the council wants to just begin addressing that issue, but. But regardless, with this project, if we don't do any new. Sich, so it winds up with the ballpark, we can't have the tennis court resurfaced, um, it won't be covered. So anything repair or maintenance is helpful, so that it's a safe, considerable project.
The, the, the money is only forthcoming if, if we do something new.
Yeah, we need to open up.
I hear from a lot of tennis players that they want that tennis court resurfaced.
I was just gonna ask you how bad it is because I don't play tennis.
Crack and pretty significant crack, and so, yeah, people mentioned that.
I know that there's like a low noise pallet, uh, paddles. Are we gonna be having those at the city hall so people can borrow those? Or?
We could, there was a question about enforcement, like if we said, oh, you have to, you know, like.
Right.
Use them or something like that, it would be hard to. You know, enforce it, to go and say, oh, you're not, you're, you're using the right paddle.
Yeah.
And to consider.
Realistically, could we enforce it?
During summer hours too, um, you know, they light it longer, but city hall goes, the weekends, you know, it's good, so. You would access that.
Apparently, there've been, uh, some cases too with people suing for the noise.
Yeah.
I, I don't wanna walk into another hornet's nest.
Right.
Um, we did, uh, Joe and I and, uh, Bryce went out and we went to one of the pickleball courts. And we, you know, we stood there, but we couldn't get our decibel reader to work, which is why we put the gate in. Kind of sit there and it, it wasn't that loud, but we weren't like professional players. They were, you know, apparently when you're really good at it, it can, can be quite loud, so. Um, I'm on the fence on this one a bit too, because I, I've heard from a number of people that pickleball, they love it, they wanna play. The nearest sport, I think, is Gi, Giantoli, uh, over by Tractor Supply. So, you know, it's not super far, but.
And, and there're, uh, there're places all over the county too.
There are, yeah, others, I guess, um, or Payda, probably.
Somebody mentioned the, uh, the, the thing over in the museum, the. But then that wouldn't help us repay the tennis.
I'm sorry, I couldn't know.
I think. Yeah, we, we had a question about, uh, moving, uh, to park near the library. Unfortunately, I think that park has a ton that requires, uh, passive, not active.
I had an idea that I'll just throw out too, which was instead of doing with, with pickleball, you do both sides. And I thought, well, what if we do it on just, out, just one pickleball?
The street side.
Yeah, on, on.
West side.
Like the, yeah, thank you, the west side. Facing the street, and then we didn't do the other side, so that way you never have eight people playing at once, you only have four. And they're on the street side, you know? I don't know, it was just.
If it was on the street side, if it was on the street side, the noise would bounce to like Karen's house.
Make it worse.
Yeah. That's fine, gee, why shouldn't it?
Other than that.
I don't think that's why she.
Yeah. It was just. And well, other questions that I'll go to public comment with, are there questions or comments for Angela on that?
I, I would like to see some type of signage, uh, that says, uh, only, you know, you can only use like low, like. Something like low sound balls and mallets.
Yeah.
And so if there was an issue, we could go, you know, we could. Gabe could go out there and force it. You should use.
House is like right, right next to the.
Um, let's see, Karen, that one's for sale, so it'd be a new, new person. Uh, Bryce is not too far.
Got any feedback from them?
And Dorothy. Public comment, maybe you can tell us about. Tell us your thoughts, okay. All right, well, why don't we go ahead and, unless we have a.
If we did not use the funding for this, uh, you know, purpose, could we use it in any other part of the city?
Yes, so, um, another project that, um, it's. Hasn't been awarded yet because we're still going through some motions, but it's the fifth of the boardwalk.
Right.
So that is where some additional funding is going. Like, there's, I'm sure, other areas that we can find some in too, but this is the one that so far has been.
Do you have any idea how much it would cost to resurface a tennis court? Sample one?
Don't have a problem.
We can, we can like find that out.
Wouldn't the boardwalk be considered repair maintenance also?
No, because it's actually, so that's the third capital outlet. Um, and it's because it's allowing for a continued use of other recreational areas. And I can find that email specifically from the Knight Theater, but that was on, but it's still looking up uses to recreational areas, and so. That was a question I had, so, but we, we clarified that.
Could these funds be used for, like, say, like, we want to design the, the playground, so we could, um, we would need a professional designer? Would we use those funds to like put that money towards designs?
I will need to check the branding. Because from my understanding, it is something that needs to be completed in its entirety, so I don't think that we could just use it for the planning.
Okay, let me go ahead and open up to. Okay, let me go ahead and open up to, oh, sorry. Something, oh, oh, did you have another question?
No. I'm saying open it up.
I'm looking at how much it would cost to resurface the tennis court, okay, public comments on this?
Um, I'm not Jane Ball, I'm Emily Bay, Emily Bay lives in the city of Connecticut, she also has a business in the city of Connecticut, and she satellite phone gave me this morning from the great, the Grand Canyon, because she said she hadn't turned in her comments on pickleball. So she asked me if I would give comments on pickleball. So Emily doesn't live exactly near the pickleball, but she rents her radio studio, which is right there, and it's a peaceful spot for her, and she helps people, the last time I saw him, she was giving a dear person who lives in the city a foot massage because that person was on hospice and died. Emily was doing it as a gift, so, um, she asked me to say, please, no pickleball. Remark, thank you.
Thank you.
The Grand Canyon.
Yes, she, um, you know, for those who don't know Emily, she's a slackliner, which means when you see that line, two hundred feet above Big Beach, and a person walking on the line, some people call it a tiger, but it's technically called a slackline, that's the only. And she is rafting the Grand Canyon, and I heard slackline in the Grand Canyon. Yeah, she, you wanna do race.
Catch you just to hike in there.
Right.
For a person on Slackline, thank you. Uh, other public comments, Dorothy, did you wanna tell us about your concern? Hold the mic down.
I'd like to, not, 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 not a crisis, I live right there. I have been impacted, I lived in that house for forty-eight years, and I have been impacted by the noise in this area, town hall, events, uh, folks, parties, receptions, um, one of the reasons that town that this goes is will be damned as it is because anytime this wedding reception, any kind of party, that's the babysitter right there. They're, they just put their kids in there, I'm not kidding you, they put their kids in there, let them just run around screaming, yelling, everything, jump the nets, hang on the nets, twist the nets, I've seen, I've seen it all, um. About years ago, six years ago, Dwight was on the council, there was a noise committee, because I had, those of us on the house, we were so impacted by the wedding receptions here, we just prayed for rain or drizzle at the reception, so the doors, doors are closed. Um, I volunteered to be on that committee, the decibel word was used in, Dwight was like, it's a decibel meeting, never got invited to one meeting, I don't think they ever had one meeting. I think, I like gay, gender, but there was, was there ever one meeting, and we all volunteered to be on, it was similar, um. I don't like tennis court at all, I have one lady that comes every day, let her talk each day, with her barking dog, and the dog barks, and barks, and if you haven't met her, you will, that dog barks, and I'm fairly used to it, it's a barking dog, it goes away in about an hour, two hours at most. Um, when I read some of the comments and concerns of people that are working with, that people attract mine to get to the pickleball court, they have to be here and wait, wait to turn, and then I think of the, the issues that this little area, that's my backyard, will have. Um, we're crazy about the noise, right, wedding receptions, I can stand on my deck, or give me my hot can, and I can hear absolutely word for word conversations, if I stand here, and Karen can't hear, and I'm no about the lady in the yellow house, it's something about, and I'm just one person here, just something about the flow of the sound going to my yard, I have no trees because they we have a tree, only around trees, farther than that, um, I'm not looking forward to something like this impacting me in my last year with me in Connecticut, I've lived in that house forty-eight years, thirty-fourty-eight years this year. I like my house, I like my neighbors, totally nice.
I hope so.
I do, I like my neighbors, um, I love cotton, the rental will have a new rental in it at some point, which is benign, but, um, maybe it's a far enough away, she probably doesn't hear, Tommy Kathleen are the same as I am, it's a direction, it's a direction that we're going, and they, they don't, you maybe hear the tennis courts, but they definitely hear the screaming kids, and during a wedding reception, they hear everything that goes on in this alley area. I've had people in, like, you have to have people waiting, I can see people waiting in the alley behind my gate, and we passed a little area back there, and if I'm, it'd be far ahead, maybe it's not even gonna be that bad. But my room is a big fat no, big fat no, they can go to Giantoli, they can, we can figure out another way to fix the service on this, if that's really how bad it is, that doesn't stop anybody from coming, they can tell you, there's people that are on lots, there's people that are all the time. I don't mind the tennis courts, or the parking lot, no the pickleball, thank you.
So we should put you down for a hard no?
I'm a big fat no, but I haven't been to these meetings in years, and you know, so I get, wow, this is important to me, um.
Thanks for letting us know, thank you. And we had public comments as well, and Kathleen or Tom sent a letter, Kathleen was voted no, yeah, not voted, but. No, other, um, pickleball. Comments. See anyone online with a comment, so I'll bring it back to the council, what do you guys think?
This is exactly what I was just afraid of when I asked about the noise, I can just hear, you know, you're going pom, 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 but I, and Dorothy's right, I wouldn't hear it because of where I am, but the people on that first side of the alley, they and it would drive them nuts, and before long, we'd have them here saying, take out the pickleball, so I, particularly seeing that there are courts all over the county, so it's not wrong for filling a must, must need. For it. And then Jack asked, can the money be used for something else? And yes, it can, so we're not gonna lose the money, so I, I'm, I.
Thank you, obviously, thank you, I will tell you, Mary and I walk, you guys all know in town, we walk almost every night, we can walk in that cool room the end of the day, but we walked yesterday, and we're gonna walk tomorrow. We have met a man and his wife that live way up at this point, and they play bocce ball maybe twice a summer, we've met him twice, he's a dodgeball fan out of Giants Sands, we know he's doing it back and forth. But that's, and all, and we walk to the museum in that area every time we walk, we clean up here, we do the gazebo, that's our thing. Nobody plays bocce ball, we, nobody plays bocce ball. And it was a nice idea, that maybe the pickleball thing, or Jack's idea of a
Playground.
A playground, I, I can't see that being physical over there either, sorry, Jack, you know, but I don't know, the pickleball, I don't know how big it is, you can only have it on half, which is dumb. Just, his whole thing's that way, but that's not a bad title there, you're gonna get around the men and the women that sleep in the gazebo, but, you know. That's a part, that's.
There's a, we can't do it.
We can't do it, no, no.
Check their.
Yeah, we, uh, there's an easement, so we can't do like soccer or anything like, uh, that has, any physical.
One thing, one thing I would recommend is that we go back and check it again on that with, the easement system.
No, it's with the city of, um, it's with the land trust, actually.
The land, okay, then that would be fine.
But, but the, the neighbor on the hill wouldn't like the, the noise going back and forth, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, back to the council, so I, you know, this, I came into it, I really wanna pickleball more in town, it's more, you know, exercise for everybody, blah, blah, but honestly, I'm like, um, it's in a residential area, no matter how you slice it, right, so I'm in that, I agree with Katie, at this point, I'm surprised that I'm saying this, because I thought it sounded really fun, but I don't want, I would never enjoy it if I knew that the whole time I was playing, I was disturbing someone's peace anyway, so.
Yeah, we kind of learned our lesson, uh, earlier, just because we can, doesn't mean we should.
Well, yeah. Uh, what do you guys think?
Well, I'm gonna be kinda, I'm gonna kinda be devil's advocate.
Okay. Okay.
Um, you know, having lived there self by a long time. It's, it's like a mixed-use neighborhood, there's, there's a lot of noise, we have this fire siren goes off very loud there, we have the dogs barking, like Dorothy said, we have people mauling their lawns, running their weed whackers. Just, you know, a wide variety of human activity, people doing stuff. So. I'm sympathetic to the to the ones that wanna have the pickleball, it's popular, it gets people out there, running around, and, uh, really, the, one of the loudest consistent noises that, that you can hear there is the kids over at the school, you know? But that's like a habit of sound, that's like a really annoying, really annoying, and it's kinda irritating sometimes, but then I think, that's, those are the future leaders of, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And so, um, you gotta, gotta make accommodations for sound. So I'm, I'm really torn, and this is a hard one, because there's a lot of people for and a lot of people against, I read all the comments.
Yeah, and like kids, it was brought up, that the kids would like to play pickleball, you know, that that's a sport that they're getting into too, but, you know?
I have one other thing to add, and I do want the council to be aware of, if, um, um, then all the funds that this so far will not be granted. I reported on this with the grant, I can hear a word, um, I sent, and I don't know the exact amount, I have to look at all the records, but at that point in time, it was over ten thousand dollars.
That we've spent doing what?
Getting ready.
The entire process of putting together the documents and.
Just spend money to make money.
But the money can be used for something. I'm not following something.
So can you, can you, um, breathe in the question of can the money be used for something else, the grant money, because Katie's a little confused that why would we lose ten thousand if we can spend the money on something else besides a pickleball court? I don't know, I don't know.
That's above her pay grade.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm Becky. So, uh, so the way, this is a very odd type of funding process that is very awkward, you, um, you put a bunch of effort in to go over these hurdles, like the land tenure, and, and, um, sequo, which didn't need it, but we still had to go through that, um, process, anyway, so there's been, uh, staff, we'll say staff time, put into this, and this grant has, it got paused, it's been, uh, I think it started like in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, when the council heard about pickleball, they heard about a couple different ideas that we had, and we just haven't been able to get over the hurdles, and so the money that we spent toward the pickleball and tennis courts um, has been out of the city's funds, and then once we get, get the contractor in place, then we could submit our first invoice, that includes the pre-construction uh, effort, and then going from there, so the entire grant allocation is still available, a hundred and seventy-seven whatever, is still available until we start drawing, and if the council doesn't wanna go forward with the pickleball, um, then that will just be it will not come out of the grant, uh, but the city, I mean, the city's already paid back, you know, all the past years, so it's not like it's already spent, we just won't get, we won't get it in our sports, so.
Is that a fair?
You know, why was this not presented to us as a navel or a project, who do you start?
So, okay, so we, this was, this has been a long time in the process, so it probably was brought up in staff reports, but no decisions, except for when we originally proposed this project, because we were looking for like what kind of recreation things could we do, we, you know, there were a lot of ideas that had to do with trails that were never gonna get over the finish lines and the timeframe of the, of the format, so we, it, it ended up that, and I think Gabe originally was going to get this tennis court surface, and then, so it did come before council, and I think the council decided to proceed, but I, I, I didn't, I came unprepared to that question today, so if we can, if we wanna look back and see what we did, do you recall?
The, the city has an asset that it needs to maintain, and we've got a lot of feedback with the last, from six, seven, eight years, that the court is not a snub, it's cracks, people are tripping on the cracks, and, and the, the surface is very deteriorated, and as a and we learned about the per capita grant program, or the per capita funds, um, and the pickleball aspect was also sort of like an up and coming activity that people were really excited about, and, and during budget meetings, we discussed how are we gonna maintain some of our assets, and the budget meetings is where these discussions occur, you know, how can we improve, not only the town hall, which is got a lot of backdated maintenance that needs to occur, but also our, our recreational asset, and this was just a pathway to, to, to get that expensive process paid for. Um, and it was very, it was, it was a favorable path for a while, it was an outreach, and I think more time has gone by, as our city manager will tell you, you know, more, more, uh, feedback communities have been receiving from pickleball communities, and how the sport is growing so fast, that it's, it's, you know, nuisance conversations have occurred as a result of that, exactly, so, uh, you know, it's just, I think it was, it was something we were looking at and pursuing for some years, um, but we've been getting to the agreement about the impacts.
Yeah, that's.
The perfect storm.
Um, I'll just kind of throw something out there, um, it would be possible, if, if the council does not wanna do the pickleball, um, it may be possible to come up with something to do with the court that isn't pickleball, but it's an improvement or an additional use, I have no idea what that would be.
Badminton.
Way.
Badminton. Yeah, badminton.
That would be a way, you know, like, you just have to do something beyond maintaining an asset, right, I'm telling you about.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too, there was another, a lot of you're gonna say something.
No, yeah, I mean, I think exploring some other racket sports, then.
It aren't, nobody see them, right.
You think badminton would be, for example, that was one of the suggestions, is that something that would look, you know, create an improvement, I guess we have to like into it, yeah.
It would, that is like super quiet.
Yeah.
You can't even hear it right now.
Basketball hoop.
Super quiet. Alright, well, I think we have a decision to make about the pickleball part.
Yes.
Now, and, um.
Well, let me, I, I, I wanna make a, a little more as devil's advocate here.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm aware of all the litigation that's going on, that's usually, you know, in the big cities, um, and especially when they have the big courts with like, you know, six people playing at once, really loud, we just had one little court on the west side, so it's as far away from Dorothy's fence as possible, and my fence, I might add, um, I just feel like, well, we could give it a try, you know, if it comes a problem, we could take it down, if not very complicated, you know, it's like.
Those are very simple.
That is simple.
Take down and the sign. It's gonna be involved.
That's a good point, so, um, you know, give it a try, I mean, you know, I kinda like, yeah, you're just doing one side.
Eli's gonna weigh in, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
I guess you're.
I, I think that's a great idea, having just the one half, and we can see how this, this way it allows us to move forward with the grant. But the other thing I was gonna mention, I know we've talked about it before, and Jack mentioned it tonight, the noise canceling racket, and of course, enforcement is one thing, but you know, we're, we're in a decent community, and, and I think if we have, you know, just some signage where we do have at the doors about the proper etiquette for tennis, to say something about pickleball, and if you play pickleball.
To say something about pickleball and if you play pickleball, that we would prefer that you use a noise cancelling racket. And we can have a few available here during times when we're here and just ask the community, you know, you know, please obey, you know, or follow this.
Curious.
Oh, yeah, out of courtesy and so on. I I think we we can get cooperation and also out of the interest of the neighboring residents. So uh, you know, I I think it would work. Then there's also a ball that I'm told that's often included, so we can also mention that. But the combination of those two, I I think are possible. And then like having just the one after instead of having pickleball on two sides, I think would help.
Thank you.
Well.
We need some data, uh, some auditory data.
I think that's a decimal.
Yeah, I don't know what that would.
Just just the thought about the uh the noise cancelling rackets and all that. We're going to do that. I think we should say they are required. Not that we would appreciate it if you use them. And some people will just do it because the sign says so. And the ones who don't, we might um just start circulating the word that, you know, if you don't comply, we're going to have to close this down. So, you know. It'd be more than just a polite request.
How hard would it be to take uh take out that pickleball court after we install it?
I don't think it's very hard. They look kind of portable to me because you take them up and down. When you're not playing pickleball, you take the net down and then people can play tennis.
So we can take the grant, do what we want and then just never do it.
That's what I think.
I was not going to say that.
No, I don't think that would be a good idea, but. Take down and we could. We could have the sign and and city staff could. You know, when it's convenient, if they're working nearby and they hear people out there playing, they could go out and say, you got the noise cancelling rackets, don't you? If they say, no, we don't, they can say, well, you know.
Staff.
That's not going to work.
I I think we should, I feel like I should, I would have a hard time, you know, I feel like it'd be hard to enforce and so I might kind of make my decision based on somebody using. A normal, maybe using a normal racket hall sometimes, but but I love the idea of trying to. You know, get people to be courteous and so forth. So it's, but I think we're, unless there are other questions about the. Any other questions or comments, we should maybe entertain a motion one way or the other. We can put it to a vote. Anybody feel like they were?
No, I'm I'm going to vote against it, so.
Hope there's a hand raised.
Make a motion.
Eric, Eric.
Hey, I apologize. I'm at work, but just very briefly, interesting idea to test it out. I recall a family visiting town a number of years ago who put tape down on the court. And put a very polite sign saying, hey, we're in town, we're enjoying pickleball. Um, please leave the tape here. I I might suggest that if the council wants to test something, that might be a good way to do it. Put it out there, invite some pickleball players. There were several letters in favor of it. And let real, hey, there's going to be pickleball going on on Saturday and Sunday. Come out and listen so we can actually. See what it feels like. People can listen and actually hear with their own ears what this is like. Um, you know, respectfully, I would suggest that only half the court is. You know, 20 or 30 feet distance. I think sound travels pretty far. I don't know. That would be a meaningful reduction in that, just a suggestion to. Do a temporary trial run like that. Um, and as far as taking the court down, I would suggest that once the striping is on there, that's going to be pretty hard to undo. People are still going to come and play with or without a net and they might bring their. Their own net. Thanks.
Oh, right, okay. Thank you. So what is the deadline for? What's the deadline? Grant decision, so that I'm just curious if we have time till the test.
Don't have the exact date, but we have until 2020. So we have some time.
Okay.
And this grant has not extended exponentially because a lot of their entity can also have.
Okay.
She's maybe tableless and I listened to what Erin.
Erin gave a.
Yeah.
Okay. So the idea on the floor is table defer this decision uh for further testing. And um try it out with the kind of a taped court to see.
With the with the mats mounted that are.
Yeah, quieter rats. Now, listen with the decimal thing. Dorothy can weigh in. Yeah, yes.
Well.
Oh, no, 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 no. No. Yeah, we wouldn't expect that.
Well, Dorothy, if what they're talking about is setting up like a test. So you could come out and hear for yourself what it sounds like.
Right, well, I think. Yeah, I think part of our challenge here is that I think I I can sense when the council is reaching, uh, it's getting late.
Saturation.
We're reaching saturation, so let's, since this isn't a urgent matter, it sounds like we have a motion to defer this one. This decision and give it further thought and potentially do a test.
Well, I wasn't listening closely, so that's not getting impact. The physical side of it.
That's what she, that's what I thought she said. Is that is that true? If we defer this for a month, that doesn't impact you? Okay. Yeah, okay.
Jeff makes the motion?
Make a motion to table it to a future agenda or taking steps to. Do testing. I'll go testing.
Yeah, so we'll have to figure out what that looks like later. Okay, I'll I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Um, okay, so. So what do we have here? We have the water advisory committee. And then and then we have the policy for future agenda items.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Council. We have before you tonight the Water Advisory Committee sunset uh. Decision. Uh, you have a bunch of information on this staff report on how this. Uh, committee was set up and uh the objectives that the purpose of the WAC uh. Or and also specific objectives that the WAC needed to achieve while it was active. So. Uh, the staff report includes that there were uh much of the. Action that this council asked for was achieved and is recommended that uh. WAC is sunsetted at this time and could be stood up again should the need arise. I've answered questions if you have.
Say it would be sunsetted and could be stood up again.
Sure.
Wouldn't have it be constituted at that point?
Yes, yes.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a part, it's a part of your municipal code, so drought would trigger it or any other council. It's council, council prerogative to stand it back up at any time that it is.
Yeah, I guess as a person who served on the water advisory committee for a couple of years and chaired it for a couple of years, I'll just say that I feel like there were um. You know, the the WAC served its purpose. It came up with an armpit issue for the water tanks, for the distribution pipes. Uh, for rainwater catchment uh systems and built a brochure for that, recommended to the city council to evaluate or consider feasibility of hookups. By which the council voted against, but the WAC did recommend that at one point. And then um and then really the latest conversations when Bryce and I were both on the water advisory. The conversations that were starting to happen were more long-term strategic and we felt that those should just, or I felt that those should just come to the council. So we really kind of ran out of. Team on kind of short-term, near-term projects because the the budgets and we're discussing the big ones that we heard of the council. Um, also things like managing the water plant, hiring a CEO, Coleman Engineering, all those kinds of things. So. I that's why I'm as the chair of the committee, I'm recommending sunsetting it because I think those conversations will happen here. And Bryce, I don't know if you have anything to add.
I pretty much feel the same way. Um, hey, um, you all did. Some fairly deep digging and came came brought forward useful information to the committee and the council and. And even though the drought wasn't specifically what really triggered it, it was a big animating factor that was really hanging over our heads at the time. Thankfully, those days seem to be passed, knock on wood, for, you know, how long, but. So I I I agree that we can not disband that one for now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any public comments? Regarding the water advisory today? Patty?
No, wait, it's not fair. You guys do an awful lot of volunteer work and um. I I think the water advisory committee should viewer and the reason is um. I don't think it was fully. Developed, you know, the three years ago, I guess, when um the Humboldt Bay Water District. Idea was set forth and I think there was a lot of emotion. Involved in the decision. She not go forward with Humboldt Bay Water District because of. The Trinidad Rancheria wanting to to hook up. The Trinidad Rancheria, I think, going forward regardless, you know, and the Trinidad Rancheria has been a wonderful partner for the city. Over the years, they continue to be, they're going to be here for a long time and um. I I think there was some feeling developed over. The city because the Trinidad Rancheria puts whole money into a water system years ago, a lot of money. Made us really whole um budget-wise. And if Trinidad Rancheria is going forward with hooking up Humboldt Bay Water District, they're going to do it anyway. It just seems like it would be. Wise to consider. A continued conversation in this regard with them. They're going to do it if they did it at the same time. I remember this discussion of, you know, well, what if we wait and the city did it later, Rancheria did it now, and would we save money? This is an awful lot to consider so late, but I just, I feel like the committee. Did a lot of great research and um. Even if it didn't meet a lot, it means you all have so many volunteer responsibilities and. I live in the city. I don't live in the city. If I did, I'd volunteer, but um. That's just my thing is to continue with, even if it's not every week or every month or I don't know. Yeah, that's all.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Other, uh, let's see, Erin, how's September? Erin?
Yeah, just briefly, um, I'm I'm a little bit on the fence on this one, having been a member of the Water Advisory Committee, but uh Cheryl, to your point, if. If if. Oh, can you hear me okay? Okay, if if you are.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, if if you are going to disband it, um, I I really hope, I I really clearly heard what you said, Cheryl, and that is that. Um, that you felt that there are long-term, longer raging issues at the, or longer raging, longer ranging issues and perhaps raging in the past. Um, that the council needs to continue to discuss and I'm going to hold you accountable to that. Um, if if the Water Advisory Committee is being disbanded, there are absolutely long-range water planning issues for the survivability and sustainability of the city's ability to deliver water. That have to be considered. So the council needs to make the time, have the bandwidth and put the time in to have those discussions, even though they're. Potentially controversial, right? So, thank you.
Yes, agree, agree.
Yeah, I I agree that disbanding the committee doesn't take off the table any options for future. Anything about water. That that's not the idea.
Yeah, and I like the idea of the council hearing, you know, one of the things um. I was talking to Dwight, who was also on the Water Advisory Committee, and one of the things. We were talking about was the fact that at the Water Advisory Committee, we have these experts come in and they would give these, you know, detailed presentations. But there would only be one, usually one or two members of the public in the meeting, so it's very small. And then the Water Advisory Committee. And then for us to just then take that data and translate it to the council, it's like, it's great for the council to hear it firsthand, so that that was my thought. Makes sense. Um, but that's the thinking. Paula, did you, were you trying to say something when you were off mute? I didn't want to cut you off. I just wanted. Erin to finish, but we'll see her now. Okay. All right, then um let me bring this back to the, oh, wait, were you going to say something in? Okay. Okay, and we, uh, let me bring it back to the council. Uh, what's, what are the thoughts?
Makes sense to me what you're saying. That, you know, why have a an advisory, a water advisory committee that gets all this intricate data? And then you've got to repeat it. Seems like it could come directly to us. At this point, the fewer committees.
Seems like we could inform the public to more about water issues than, you know, like the presentations we've been receiving. Be really hopeful where everybody could be.
I move that we sunset the Water Advisory Committee without prejudice to reinstating it in the future if needed. And with um the council fully open to long-range planning. Water needs of the city directly to the council.
So I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. All right, so the next item on our agenda is a pretty straightforward one, I think. A little discussion on it. Uh, the discussion decision to develop guidelines or formal policy to submit future agenda items to the council for consideration. So this is a follow-up just on our discussion about. How do we decide what goes on? How do we collectively decide what goes on our agenda? And uh, Joe, did you want to?
Uh, I think you did a pretty good job, Mayor. It's the last item, so I'll let you all have it and decide what we want to make a future agenda.
Okay, sorry, that was my watch talking. Um, yeah, so I think what we, the way, the way it's been working, and maybe this is, uh, this will streamline things, is the mayor and the mayor pro town meet weekly with the city manager. And we discuss based on input from the council members, from the public and from staff. Um, kind of what are all the things coming in? And then we prioritize the list and we determine the agenda. But what we were thinking about last time, because uh one councillor recommended something for the agenda and another councillor wasn't sure. Was it if if, for example, you suggested, so any councillor suggested an item. And it didn't get pri- prioritized by Bryce and I and Joe in our weekly meeting. You could then say, we would come back to you and tell you and tell you why, and you could, we could put it to a vote at the council. We literally say. Like if you wanted to talk about, I don't know, the playground or something and for some, and of course we'd want to, but let's say we didn't. And you could say at the next meeting, well, you know, I would like to put that forth and I'd like to put it to a vote. And then by that way, we can get a democratic. That process. I think that's, you know, sounds good.
Yeah, that's. Well, I think for the Brown Act, um. You you know, if somebody, so if if the council wanted to override.
Yeah.
I'll call it the.
Right.
That would have to be put on a future agenda.
Yes, yes.
But but we could notate on the um. In the the first page that under staff reports, if that comes up, that there's always a possible possibility of discussion and decisions regarding overriding. The.
Action agenda.
Yeah, so we can take that action.
Okay.
Legally, because the public was advised that there's a possibility that we could.
Yeah, I like that idea.
overriding the um committee recommendation.
Okay, I think Paul came in person, so hold that stop because we've already. My computer was not already, unfortunately, we've already voted and we moved on to the other agenda, so just. Take a pause, have a seat.
I would like to say something, even if you voted already. I don't know what your vote was.
Okay.
I I want to have a few words.
Okay.
Should we finish? Let's finish this item.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, so um.
Sorry, so um.
Okay, so.
You were talking about having like a.
Yeah.
placeholder in the.
So the agenda will, will always, under staff reports, would have a sentence explained that.
Yeah.
There's a possibility that. Based on the staff, the staff. based on the staff, a staff report, the full council might overrule.
Yes.
The commitment, so that the public knows. So we essentially comply with the Brown Act.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, so transparency in government is.
That would importantly give the public a chance to be notified of what the item was, would it?
Well, the item, the item wouldn't be decided at that meeting, only the fact that it's going to be put on the next agenda, he voted on by the council.
Yeah, so we make sure that, that basically we talk about all the agenda items that we want to put forth, the public can put forth, you know, staff puts forth, we make a decision, and then.
Make a decision.
The full council can overrule us.
At the next, at the next meeting.
Yeah, the full council can always. And say we want that on the next one.
Yeah, because what we're trying to do is instead of what's been happening the last, you know, few years or whatever it was before I joined, was that we would have these meetings, the weekly meetings, making it happen, but you didn't necessarily know if you had suggested, like, I would suggest agenda items two or three times, and they might not make the agenda. So I think we're just trying to make it more, you know.
More democratic.
More democratic, thank you.
Committee doesn't have too much power.
Correct. We want to have equal power amongst the council because we're all equal. We're all equals.
Same checks and balances in Washington, D.C.
So I think. Yeah, so let me, any questions for the council before I open up to public comments on this one? Okay. Any public comments about the process we just described for setting our agendas? I don't see any, so back to the council, to Aaron. Oh, pardon me, Aaron, did you have your hand raised?
Sorry, yeah, my hand's a little slow here. At, at the surface, this seems like a, a good thing. I just want to make sure that we're, we're solving an issue that needs to be solved, or that you guys are, that there's still a good solved mechanism for the public to be able to provide input and get issues raised. And then I guess my comment is, you know, it's kind of a representational council, right? The council's there, elected by the citizenry to represent the citizens' interests, not necessarily their own beliefs or interests, and so even if we have a committee or a majority of the council members voting one way, I, I just want to make sure there's still perhaps language written in this policy that says if the majority of the citizenry comments are leaning one direction, that, that, that might perhaps override a council's majority vote to make sure that the opinions of the, of the body of citizens of Trinidad can be heard, if that makes sense.
It does, I.
Well, that always goes without saying, I think, anytime we open it up to public comment.
Yeah, it's not a voting, though, is the thing. So for example, as, as representative government, we don't put agenda items to the public for voting, for example, like, so, so, and, and we couldn't in the room even say, you know, five people say this and three people say that, because we don't know what the other 250 people say in town.
Well, I, I guess my point is respectfully, if, if the majority of residents, you know, want to have something raised, but the majority of the council does not, I, I think we find ourselves at a bit of a.
Yeah.
You know, issue, and, and of course, the ballot box can always solve that, but that's not a terribly good solution in our town where we run unopposed or, you know, or begging for candidates from time to time.
Now, I guess, I, I think Bryce is right, then. I guess I was just, yeah, most of the topics that I come up with are because I've heard from the community, so I think the council, hopefully, is, we would definitely be listening to the community and what they want to talk about.
Yeah, that would, that would be awfully hard.
To ignore it. But yes, you're absolutely right. That's a good point. Keep the community in mind, and yeah, we're representing.
At the dirt, before the vote, where one or more council members want to overrule the committee decision, it would be opened up to the public at that point to weigh in on.
Yes, yes.
We should vote.
By agendizing it, we'll get public input. Okay.
Well, they're agendizing it for the next, but I mean at the, at the appeal.
Right. Yes, at the appeal part, which is also.
Yeah, it would be built into the agenda.
Yes. Okay, I understand.
Okay.
I think it makes total sense. Other public comments, though, on this? Yes, Anne?
How would you?
And Paula, you had your hand up. I listened to you talk about WAC or this.
WAC.
Okay, that. We are, it's, okay, I'll get.
I'm patient.
I'll, we'll have to open it back up.
How would such a public comment be solicited?
So publicly, if we're discussing agenda items for future topics, we discuss it under future topics, and then we ask for input. Then if it's on the agenda, the public comments on the agenda, at the beginning of the meeting, you know, when, when I say I go through the agenda with the council, and then I ask the public if they have any comments on the agenda. So that's a place where you can say, you know, I, I don't think this should be on the agenda, or I recommended this, and then we can say, oh, okay, well, that was, we didn't prioritize for this meeting, but it's coming up in two months or something. Does that make sense? And you can send emails, you can call.
I guess I was thinking less in terms of you're at the meeting, but let's say something is controversial at one meeting, and then you're like, oh, we need to know if this is something that matters to the public. How is that a good check? Email people or text them or.
No, that's a good point. We, I mean, we did a community survey to try to understand people's preferences. Right now, most of the way that we hear from people are, you know, coming to the meetings or sending emails. We don't, we haven't done a lot of polling. Our website actually has that capability, and we've talked about doing that. I don't know if I'm answering your question the way you're. If somebody else wants to take a stab at it.
You, you did mention something about community alerts about signing up, like, in Los Angeles, for instance, you sign up for alerts, and then the city just sends you things that are relevant to the city, like, there's a lot of rain and lights, we can.
I believe our website has you notified, so you can sign up in the next one. Again, there's anything that comes out on the website, so you can sign up for a variety of things, committee commissions, all the boards that need about what you want, alerts, or they'll send those.
Yeah. Then it's automatically sent. Yeah, it has SMS and email, but we haven't been, we haven't been getting as many signups as we'd like, so that's a difference.
It's a problem in every agency I've been in. So a lot of people ask for more information, but they won't put a e-notified.
I used to be a journalist and I covered LSU.
Yeah.
Awesome. I'll sign up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell everyone you know.
Thanks, but you're, you know, you're raising because more, how we get more public input on the agenda and the agenda items. I think we need to noodle that a little bit.
I, I apologize. May I make just one more?
Yes.
Again, I, I just being very honest and frank, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned over whether or not this is an actual problem in our town. In the, but coming up on six years, I've been a member of the community and attending these meetings, I, I've not been aware of this being an, an issue or a challenge to get items onto the agenda, and, and maybe that's just a lack of information. But it is interesting that, that has become now an agenda issue to be discussed after the water issue was raised at the last meeting, and I've not had this on, on my radar as, as a concern or a challenge with our city government. I guess that's all I'll say. Thanks.
Okay.
Well, I guess, Aaron, what it is, is you know, apparently, at some point, a pattern and practice evolved organically between the mayor, the pro town, and the city manager of how to make the first cut for agenda decisions. And in the process of that, we just asked ourselves, is, is maybe we should have, make this the official policy, just clarify, so the whole world knows this is how you get something on the agenda in Trinidad.
Yeah, I think it was.
It's not, there was no, like, big pressing problem, but it was just like a loose hanging out there, a loose end, like, maybe we should just tuck this in and do a little.
I'm going to agree with Bryce. Like, I used to ask for things on the agenda and they never show up, and so I just stopped asking.
Right. This gives, this would give you a power.
Yeah, like, how many times I asked to get the power lines underground and have a discussion about that or other items?
Right, right.
Yeah, this way, we would come back and say, oh, we talked about that, and this is why it's not coming up in the next month, and you would have transparency and so would the public. And, and yeah, it's, part of it is new city manager, so it was a good opportunity for me to say, and Bryce to kind of say, oh, I was like, he's like, how have you guys been doing this? And I'm like, wow, you're going to be back in Steve, we're here, they met with Eli, they had this weekly meeting, I just kind of picked it up, and so yeah, so anyway, I'm, I'm, I have an obligation to get the council out of here at a decent hour, so I'm going to move this along. I don't see any more public comments, and.
I'll make the motion.
And. But we're still not talking about WAC. Sorry.
We need to close it.
We got to finish this item first.
This item.
We have future agenda.
Close on the item.
This is the last item. Then we're going to reopen yours.
Thank you, Ben.
Briefly, do it briefly, because I'm.
Having to be very trouble here.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm moving that we adopt the policy that I explained. Anybody want to restate it?
I, I think it's basically just that there's a committee, the mayor, the mayor pro town, and the city manager meet weekly. They will bring that, those items to, that are not selected to the public and the, the council as appropriate and.
Right, in, in, like, your report.
Yeah.
You will say you did not select this item, this item, or this item, and at that point, any council member that wants to sponsor those.
Yeah.
For the agenda will say, well, I, I move that we include so-and-so.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Whoa, whoa. It's in line. Okay, so, uh, any, okay, before we go to future agenda items, so I, I'm a little bit, I need to take two seconds here. We have voted on WAC, we have voted to sunset the WAC committee, and we agreed that strategic topics, things like, we're someone to suggest the city should do a feasibility study on connection to Humboldt Bay municipal water district, or I look at other long-term strategic sources dealing with climate change and, and water provisioning resiliency, those kind of things would all, and possibly things like water plant management, you know, rainwater catchment, a lot of the things that are more strategic, long-term, well, forget rainwater catchment, it's not as strategic, but would come before the council. So the, the council agreed that at this point, the types of decisions, the types of discussions that were happening at WAC next were going to be so strategic that they should just be directly discussed at the council, and the decision was made to sunset the WAC. So I don't know that I, we need to open for public comments at this point, or the vote has been taken. However, if you want to, Paula, to spend a minute or two to, to share your thoughts, I will allow that, again, just a minute or two, and I'll open to public comment. So just.
The original objectives and tasks that WAC was tasked with were not accomplished. This task given in one of the very first WAC meetings I attended, I offered a way of being a public outreach, educate the public, and get the public to respond. Suggestions were never acted upon. I believe act first that have not been accomplished would be more of a challenge for the city council to accomplish. I think what we needed, well, basically active WAC, I think we need to go back three years. I think we need to type, I say, we, of speaking for the city council to outreach to the community and get people more involved in the development. Gathering information to give to the council. So experience with city we traumatized by the meetings that happened three years ago as far as evaluating whether we should investigate and to Humboldt Bay. It's a lot of angry soundbites, by very organized media group located in Pennsylvania, and they can still be accessed if you want to see what those soundbites are. Website is hot. And, you know, in, in the level of discussion or confusion that occurred at pivotal meetings over three years ago ended up, and the city decided, well, maybe we'll put into this in three years. Years have passed. I, I'm hopeful, but I will not be at all surprised if, if the county down the road, as it has for decades, if you look into the paper files at the civic building. This issue has come up periodically because Trinidad has periodically been subject to droughts. Some people still claim that climate change is not a real thing. And it has been kicked down the road for decades. It used to be, it could have been done on pennies for the dollar decades ago, and now.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, Paula. I'm so sorry, but we just, we started at five o'clock, and so we're on our.
Watch hour. I apologize because my computer started.
No, and I, I did ask if you.
My computer wasn't.
Yeah, I, I know, and I have read your public comments, and I know, and I'm, from our meetings at the WAC, and, and you know, Bryce was there too. I know how you feel about this, and I know you have strong feeling.
Bryce, see, see if this council will.
We are best to surprise you. Do something there.
That was created. Bryce.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for that, and any future agenda items that you would like to? Thanks, Pat. I would like to mention the AV systems. I don't know if it should be teed up as an agenda item. Annexation, we talked about having someone come in. Jack, I'm sorry, you were going to say something.
So before Paula got here, I, I was going to recommend having a feasibility study of creating an emergency intertie with, with the Rancheria, when they connect to Humboldt Bay. So basically, it, it's a switch. We are low on water, we turn on that switch, we fill up our tanks again.
So having an emergency intertie with.
With.
Humboldt Bay versus.
Yeah, and we, we create the, the folks that didn't want the intertie with Humboldt Bay happy, because it's an emergency intertie. It's not going to create more water for us, but it's going to give us that reserves, so when we do need it, we can just turn on that pipe, fill up our tank, and good.
Are you wanting that as an agenda?
On a, like, a feasibility study of creating that, that emergency intertie. We already have a four-inch pipe going from our tank to Rancheria. One day Rancheria won't need that pipe anymore, because they're going to be connected to Humboldt Bay. So we just need now a switch to turn on when we need extra, extra water. The infrastructure is already there.
That would be include a, a bigger conversation about whether or not we should tie in.
No, no, it, it's basically, we're just taking it from Rancheria, we're buying it from, or we're just using there as an emergency.
Emergency waters.
I think that agreement with, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Yes, I think that agreement would probably have to be with Humboldt Bay Water. I don't think it would be with the Rancheria.
Yes.
Have to be with, I'm, I'm sure.
There would be some ins and outs with it, but I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think, I think we can find time for that.
You know, I, I don't think it's really a pressing issue, because probably getting them hooked up is still years away.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's going to be.
A great idea.
I think it is.
Kind of keeps. Yeah, keeps everyone happy. You have guys against it, guys for it.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
That's a good one, so we'll talk more about it when it's agendized. And anything else? Hey, kids, you've done a great job. We're adjourned.